I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the clerk calling rule. Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Kittleson.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Truel.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
And Boersma is absent on excuse, so there are 11 alders present tonight. Thank you. I wanted to share with you tonight that our clerk has officially graduated from the Clerk's Institute at UW-Green Bay, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
As well as this last year she attended on full scholarship, so it cost the city nothing at all, so it was very nice. Thank you, Lana, for earning your scholarship.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have some guests here, actually two groups of guests here from Norway. One group visited us for just the day and then they're on their way to Dubuque yet this evening. Yeah, to Dubuque yet this evening. They are from Norway. I can't remember where. They're from Norway. And then the other group, that is, the dancers are from Tin. And it's a group of young dancers. They arrived in Stoughton Sunday afternoon about 2:00, and they will be dancing with our Norwegian dancers. They taught them some new dances or shared some dance steps on Monday morning. They performed at Skullen Home this morning. They're performing in Madison tomorrow night, and they're performing in our own Opera House on Thursday evening. So if you'd like to see some Norwegian dancers dance, not our dancers, but dancers from Tin, Thursday night at the Opera House would be a great opportunity. I think that's all that I have to share. Are there communications from our alderpersons? Alderperson Kittleson.
I was wondering if by chance we could switch agenda item number 11 to 12 and 12 to 11.
Thank you. Are there any concerns or those all in favor of making a switch? All right, we'll make a switch. Thank you. Any other communications from alderpersons this evening? Alderperson Kittleson, or Kittleson, I've got Kittleson on the brain. Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to encourage people to view the joint meeting that the committee at the Hall had last week with the Stoughton area school district. That can be viewed on WSTO, you can stream that. And I'd also like to thank Tass Johnson and Greg Jensen and Michael Engelberger for volunteering to be on the ad hoc committee that came out of that meeting along with three school board members, and I believe the chamber is going to be involved with that as well. So thank you for that. And then just to let the council know that earlier this evening I did have a brief meeting with a couple of representatives from Moving Out.
And did you want to share?
We just basically discussed their plans and kind of summarized where we're at today, and I'm guessing we'll get into that conversation later in the agenda item as it relates to the property on the Milfab site.
All right, thank you. I see no additional comments, so we'll move into a presentation of the Highway Trailer Building complex. This was a survey report by Stephen Marple of Insight Consulting Architects. Thank you for coming back. I know you had given an in-depth presentation at the RDA meeting last week, so we appreciate your visit to share with the council.
Well, thanks for having me and thanks for making me agenda item number one. That's unique in my experience. I'm usually 20, 30, 40, somewhere in there, so I appreciate that. And based on Mayor Olson's recommendation, that in-depth that we had was a little impromptu, believe it or not, when I was talking to the RDA, I put together a much briefer sort of presentation together for you tonight, and the full text, and there's a zillion photos in my report, are available, I believe, if you haven't seen it already. We used a drone to fly the buildings because of the cost of access and because of the safety involved, and we were able to get up close and personal to a lot of areas of the building. As we move through these slides, they are going to be in black and white. I decided to do that. That's the first time I've ever done that in 30 years. But the nature of the photos, you can really see the detail. The contrast is much greater. I knew this room was a little bit brightly lit, so hopefully we'll be able to see these. Is it possible that we can turn off the lights near the screen, or are we going to mess with stuff?
Before we start, Stephen, I think it's important to remind, or to inform those at home as well as others that may be watching tonight that the request, and the reason that you've done the survey, was due to some concerns about the stability of the building.
Yes.
So we contracted with you to go out and take a closer look for us.
Yes, and we did that. I had my structural engineer with me on a subsequent visit to the drone visit, and we were inside the building as much as we felt comfortable. It's not very safe inside the building at this particular point in time. There's a lot of fall. We'll get into that a little bit as we get into the pictures, but that is indeed the whole, I think, the genesis of this survey and really the purpose for the city hiring us to do this survey. So this is the building that is commonly referred to as the Blacksmith Shop. You can see it has sloping, a steeply sloped roof. It's clay tile. It's called a federal tile. It's a very striking structure. You don't really get a view of that from anywhere in the city except for, oh, yeah, thank you, and which one is it? The red one?
Yep.
There we go, yeah. So that is federal tile. Those tiles are actually like 3 feet by 4 feet. They're huge. But this structure inside is a steel structure, and if you haven't been in there, it's a fascinating space and it has a ton of potential as it is. There's a lot of degradation along the sides. But can I advance using this?
Give me the, I'm sorry. That work for you, but right now.
I appreciate it. I think it's working. So we're going to go through some photos. These are just several of the photos that we took when we were there. This is actually, if I go back, okay, I think.
I did it.
Pardon?
It hasn't synced yet.
Okay, okay. So that photo is right here. Okay, so these bricks, fascinating the way they did this, and I'm going to try and move quickly. I tend to get into too much detail. If I go beyond 15 minutes, please, somebody throw something at me. But the brick in this, if you go to the next photo, the brick, you can see it actually courses along with the slope. That's very unusual. It's a very cool building. But this brick is in pretty rough shape. Next slide, please. Obviously, this is in really bad shape. Now, this is an overhanging, it's like a blind arcade is what it's called, but that brick that has left the facade actually did perform a structural purpose, but the wall is not substantially weakened by the loss of that brick. It seems, you know, like a lot, but it really is not substantially weakened. Is it weakened? Yes. Is it vulnerable to failure? Yes. Next slide. Again, you can see just a tremendous amount of open mortar joints and a lot of degradation of the brick and mortar. This is all, and I'll continue to say this throughout, this is all what I would consider to be very restorable under normal circumstances. This is actually what I'm calling the Factory South, so it's to the south or toward the river from the Blacksmith Shop. Next slide. Now you're seeing, this is a wood storage area, and then this gabled roof over here is actually what was the power plant for the Moline Plow Factory, and then here is the factory portion of the building. You can see along these lines, now, these panels are actually asbestos. It's called transite, but the lintels along here are actually in very good condition. There's not a lot of rust jacking. There's not a lot of issues. There is mortar in, mortar loss in the upper reaches in the parapets, and you can see that corner kind of tilts out a little bit. That actually is from a rebuild that was not very well executed. There is a lot of mortar loss, to be sure. Next. This is one of the worst areas, this entire facade, it's one of the worst areas. This is completely open. Again, it is something that can be restored. This is probably the most challenging in the entire complex. One of the more challenging, I should say. Next slide. And this is indicative of a lot of parapet areas, parapets over the course of the life of a building, parapets because they're on the outside, on both sides, take a brunt of the weather. They also, there's the wall cap there and there's open joint right there, so water's getting in. But even so, those lintels are not jacking. They're not, there's not a lot of degradation at the lintels. Next. This is just an area where there has been some sandblasting and some patching and a number of other things. This round arch, that's at the power plant. So it's on the south street side. That's just an interesting detail where there's, this is an Oculus window. Again, the attention to detail when this place was built is pretty amazing. Next. That's just sampling probably, I don't know, 2% to 3% of the total photos I've taken of this building. What we've done is we've labeled the buildings by name and by letter because of some issues I had with getting this information over into PowerPoint. I don't have the key for this, but A is the, that's Blacksmith Shop. B is Factory South. C, D, E are, I'm calling them Factory East, Factory West, and Factory Southwest, I believe. And then this G is actually Power Plant. The Power Plant, that structure actually extended all the way out to here originally. You can see, oh, can you go back, please? That's okay. I've got fall zones that are laid out. Now, this is really the end result of the structural portion of our survey is that while the walls are stable, they're relatively straight and relatively true. I've seen much worse, much worse, and in terms of the masonry. The issue that we have is we have a wood, timber, and wood deck structure. This is entirely wood, and because in this area, and in this area, and particularly over here, and I believe another area over here, there's some areas where there has been significant degradation of the wood structure due to wood rot, and there's been collapse of beam right along this line right here. It was not an outermost beam. If it was an outermost beam, I think we would have had some bigger trouble. So when I was talking to the RDA last time we met, I was suggesting that the risk of catastrophic failure is relatively minimal considering what it looks like, but it's still a risk. And I'm not going to try and counsel anybody as to how risky it is or whether or not it's an acceptable risk. That's for the city of Stoughton to decide, and I've heard that measures have been taken, and I'm glad for that. This fall zone, actually, it does extend a little bit beyond that. Our structural engineer determined that if there was a structural failure of the wood and the wood deck collapsed, it could put a lateral force on the outside wall and actually push it into the street. And we determined that the limit of risk as far as significant fall was the height of the building, which is approximately 35 feet. So I believe the street, is the street completely closed off right now?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that that is wise, I really do. It's unfortunate, but I would hate for anything to happen, and it's a duty that I have if I'm looking at a building and I see that, I do need to call that out. Also here on the east side on what is essentially like, it's a private street, but it's 7th, correct? That is, that also was fenced off because there are residential buildings here, there are kids playing right up against the building, and that's just a bad idea. To the south, the site is secured, so we felt that there was really nothing further needed there. Next slide. So you can see more close up. You can actually see like a fish being half eaten by birds. You can see the bones of the structure right there. So that roof is completely open. Every time it rains, every time it snows, it's pouring in there. The structure is completely saturated, and every winter it gets worse, and it's going to get worse in an exponential way. It's going to get worse, and then the rate of which it gets worse will get worse. So it's going to get very bad if we don't do something as soon as possible. Next. Area D is somewhat better, but there's still a significant amount of moisture. I still would not feel comfortable walking around in any part of that structure. Next. And the same thing here. This area here is particularly bad. But even these, and I talk about this, these parapets are fairly square and true. They're really not that, they're not that bad all the way around. And here is an area where I say that the masonry is the worst. It actually, it is not too far off plum. Next. There we go. There it is again. Next. This is the junction, and that junction is important because one of the options that I was asked to consider or was suggested that I consider when I'm making recommendations for which it happened to this building, is the possibility of retaining the Blacksmith Shop and demolishing the remainder of the structures. That junction is really important because its condition is going to affect how this portion of the building that remains is, you know, it's going to affect how it's treated as we deconstruct that area. In that scenario, and I'll get into it, I guess, a little bit later on, but in that scenario, the rest of the building could be wrecked. This area in the direct vicinity and over here, an area B, those areas would have to be deconstructed so as not to destabilize the structure. Oh, I've got it, okay. All right. And then this was just me calling out the Blacksmith Shop. The masonry in the Blacksmith Shop along this wall is missing in many areas. All that is left is the concrete block infill that they use to close the windows. So the brick is gone, but the negative of that arcade or that rhythm still exists in the concrete block. So if the decision is made to restore this, that's actually going to save money and time, and we can restore it exactly as it was because we can use that concrete block as a support for the structure that we put together. They won't have to create a construction structure. It's called centering. They don't have to do that. It's already there. And again, here are these photos. I'm just pointing out all the lintels, and, you know, they just, they are not that bad. They really are not. This is a very interesting segmented arch, which means it's not a full round arch. It's a part of an arc, arch. That could open up someday again if it doesn't become part of history. And again, going around the corner. Okay, so now, I don't have a handout for myself to read, so I can read. So option one that we see, so we fulfilled our requirement for...
Stephen, we can't hear you though on the microphone. Thank you.
We fulfilled our requirement for the, for, you know, giving advice regarding the, or giving our opinions regarding the structure and its integrity and what to do. Option one is, I appreciate that. Option, I've gotten to the point where there's no such thing as a quadrophocal. Option one is the adaptive reuse of the entire complex. So I still believe in, as a professional, as a preservation architect, as a person who specializes in working on buildings that have to be torn apart to be rebuilt, I still believe that there is a good use for this building. I think it could be preserved and saved. I think that the cost to do that is as follows, and for the numbers that I've used, I'm using my experience, projects that we've done, similar projects. It's the numbers I'm using for all of these are related to that. And just to understand that 2.25 to 2.5 million dollar number, that is to bring the building into a shell state, so there is no interior anything. It's basically just creating a safe and stable shell. The option is going to require the complete, this option, excuse me, would require the complete deconstruction, excuse me, another first. A complete destruction or deconstruction of the wood frame structure inside the building, and then a recreation or a creation of a new structure within, retaining the exterior shell. Because of the condition of the interior structure, I believe that that would still be tax credit eligible. It's a big factory space, and as long as the repairs to the structure, the replacement of the damaged structure is done in a historically sensitive way, you can still be tax credit eligible. So those numbers can be affected by tax credits. Once we get into any partial demolition, so options two and options three, any full or partial demolition, historic tax credits are out the window. So option two, which is a selective demolition of everything but the Blacksmith Building, that is not tax credit eligible. I've confirmed that with the State Historical Society, and it doesn't meet with the standards of the National Park Service. So once we get into that point, the numbers that you're seeing there, I believe are, again, accurate based on similar projects that we've completed in the last five years, let's say. 1.3 to 1.5 million to just maintain that building. That requires the demolition of a portion of the complex, the careful deconstruction of anything directly adjacent to the building that will remain, any underpinning, all of that kind of stuff that would have to happen, and then the restoration of that structure, again, to a safe shell sort of scenario. Option three is the full demolition of all of the buildings in the complex. And although I would never recommend that as a preservation architect and as, you know, I'm on your Landmarks Commission, I'm not a citizen, I'm not a taxpayer here, so I'm not asking anybody to spend their money. What I'm telling you is that it's going to cost about a million to a million two to completely dispose of everything on the site. The reason it's so expensive is because there's simply so much brick mass there, so much masonry. There's a lot of labor involved, and there's a lot of hauling and a lot of just disposal of those materials. So I'm basing that on a very similar project that frankly was about a tenth the size, and it was about $120,000 about three or four years ago. It was in Iowa, and that person who did the demo work actually hauled the brick, it's very similar, hauled all the brick to their own site in Iowa. Apparently you can do that, and they disposed of the brick on their own site. So they saved a lot of disposition costs. So I'm fairly confident about all these numbers. I think that depending on how you go, if you wish, I can relook at the numbers and we can come to a point where we would look more in depth of what these numbers would actually mean, but as far as the scope of what I did this time, this is where we're at. So those are the options as I see them before you. There might be other options that are combinations or whatever, but you're looking at a liability of anywhere from a million to two and a half million. Option one leaves you with an entire structure of a lot of square feet that you can potentially market. Option two leaves a much reduced building that does not have tax credits available, but you would at least be saving a portion of your historic fabric in this city. Option three, obviously, you know, it's just, in my mind, that's just money to clear the site and get it ready for the developer. Stoughton is a, it's a city that, it was based in its early years on industry, and this is one of the last vestiges of your historic fabric, your historic, your cultural history of the hard work and the industry that, you know, was, made it prominent in the state of Wisconsin, in Dane County. Mant Wagon Factory was the largest employer in Dane County in the latter part of the 19th century, and it would be a shame to see it go, but I understand that we live in times such as these that tough decisions need to be made. So if there's anything I can do, like I said, I'm already on your Landmarks Commission, and I've done a lot of work on this building and the power plant on my own dime because I just feel strongly about this town and about this place and the people here. So I will open my doors to anybody who wants to come to my office or open my phone to whoever wants to give me a call and talk about this, and I'll take any questions you have at this point.
Well, item five and six on our agenda will allow us to discuss a little more fully, so as a presentation we'll try to keep the discussion a little bit limited, but I see Alderperson Truel has a comment.
One quick question. Steve, I asked you this question at the RDA meeting. One of the options that's potentially a part of taking down the Milfab property, the rest of those buildings, was saving some of the brick there because we were originally told that perhaps that was important to this building. In your opinion, if, and again, ultimate decision will be made, but if the second option was basically where we are on record right now, to save the Blacksmith Building, is there any reason for us to try and save brick from the Milfab project as a part of that demolition?
Okay. That's really a question for, it's almost like what they call a game time decision. And I, to be honest with you, I can't remember what the exact words of my response were. So if I say something that's a little bit different, call me out on it and we'll talk about it. But the, this, I'm working on the Madison Municipal Building, which is the old federal courthouse downtown Madison, and we were actually going to specify, we actually specified and was bid some historic bricks from Iowa that were a good match for infill. In the end, they were, we had to reject them because what we got for a sample didn't match what was there. So there's an awful lot of brick out there that, you know, if you're going to find a use for it, it has to be a very specific use. Perhaps it could be used onsite or in town or whatever. The bigger issue is how easy is it to get the mortar off of that brick? Because the brick is only useful if you can get all the mortar off. It has to be clean. You can expect in a demolition or a deconstruction, you're going to spend a lot more money than just simply wrecking it. So you're going to have an investment there, but the time and money it takes to salvage the brick, by and large, people come into these situations and would like to do it, but they decide it's not important, unless, again, there's a specific use. The best way to reuse this brick is to not take it down. The second best way would be to reuse it on site somewhere. Beyond that, it's, I don't think it has any value, value at all. It really doesn't.
And again, I want to follow up because of clarification, you sort of called you out a little bit, and that was, again, we're talking about the Milfab, again, not the Highway Trailer Complex, but the Milfab Building, and there is some brick that's there. I believe you told us last week when I asked the question that if the ultimate goal here was to just save the Blacksmith Building, you felt that there was enough brick around, you know, that made more sense to try and salvage that from the Highway Trailer Building, not to try and do it, again...
Yes, okay, so, now I'm recalling, so it was, right, and in the context of the Milfab site, yes, it's a relatively small amount of brick. As big as that, the Milfab site is, there really isn't that much brick there. And to save that on the chance that you might need it if you did that, I think would not make sense. So as you're making a decision about the Milfab site, absolutely, I would recommend getting, just getting rid of it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'd like to keep this kind of short because we're going to go into it on five and six briefly, Regina.
Okay. One, I wonder if Greg can turn the lights back on so the WSTO can get, good video. Second, you were talking about that roof that is just like a sieve right now. Is there anything the city can do to block that so it doesn't cause any more damage at this point? Or are we beyond that because it still might take a couple of years for us to get all our ducks in the row to get it down? So how do we make sure that it doesn't?
I think there's a couple of things you have to grapple with there. You're not going to find anybody who's going to want to do that for you. You have to, if you're going to put something down that's going to keep water out, you have to either get people up there, you have to literally fly it in with a crane or something like that, but then it has to be attached or it has to be ballasted. And in our climate, in our neck of the woods, it's a 10 pound per square foot scenario. So there's really nothing we can... it's a 10-pound-per-square-foot scenario. So there's really nothing we can do, short of building a superstructure above it, an umbrella of sorts. There's nothing we can do to that part of the building. It's absolutely beyond any consideration like that at this point, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, I know Michael, and then Greg, and then I'm going to cut it off till we come to five and six.
Can I ask a question? Are you requesting that I stick around for those agenda items, just in case there are questions, or?
I'm going to look at the council for that, if they think that's been helpful.
If I pout?
Okay, if you would, yes.
If I give you my sad puppy look?
Your sad puppy look. Well, we'll make it brief.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, it's his timing.
I'll just wait until-
Okay. Greg?
Okay. Quick, AJ, if I could ask you to please comment from a risk management point of view.
And that is on our next agenda item, so why don't we wait for that? Let's go on to, that's five and six on our agenda. So we'll wait for that. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Stephen. We appreciate all your work on the item.
Sure.
The next item on our agenda is our public comment period. We currently have no one registered to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move past that and on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight consists of the July 11th council minutes, the July 18th joint committee of the whole and the RDA minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Agenda? That's hard to say.
To approve, second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Truel. Does any older person wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I see none. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Here's where old business begins with the status report regarding the street closure of East South Street and the designation of the Highway Trailer Building as a local landmark. So to start it out, I wanted to share with the council and those at home that I've met with HR Director Gillingham, she's also our risk manager, Police Chief Leck, Fire Chief Wagner, EMS Director Schimmelfinning, Public Works Director Abear, and Building Inspector Kittleson to discuss the safety concerns and the boundary of the fencing installation. So, we met last week, and that is Thursday afternoon, when we decided with Stephen's report and consulting with our insurance carrier to go ahead and close that street, and only allow access by those homeowners, very limited access. So, AJ has written a memo for our review, and I'll have her go through that, please.
Do you want me to read it, verbatim?
Sure.
Okay. It said, "I've received and reviewed the document that was provided to us, the Highway Trailer Building Complex Survey Report. The Highway Trailer Building continues to be a risk management concern in regards to the safety for the citizens living near the building, as well as the people traveling on the street and sidewalk. The city has taken appropriate measures to eliminate the risk within the complex by fencing the perimeter." Now, I'm just talking there about the basic building, not the additional concerns that we have on what occurred Thursday and Thursday afternoon. As you're all aware, the spring and summer has had frequent weather events, including high winds and rain. These events have caused bricks to fall from the building, as well as one of the beams failed and it did fall. The beams are saturated from the rains. Last week, I shared the report, and that's this document here that I'm referencing as the report, with our insurance carrier, and asked for their advice. They supported the report by stating that the building is at risk of failing. Therefore, it presents a potential risk and safety risk to the neighbors and anyone in that area, traveling through that area. Therefore, based on that feedback from, as Donna had said, the city staff, the insurance carrier, the road was temporarily closed. Please note that the sidewalk was closed due to safety concerns earlier this spring. But I have been observing, I've been driving past it, there is foot traffic that continues to go through that area. All we have up currently is barricades. As a risk manager for the city of Stoughton, I, in my professional opinion, based on that report, city staff feedback, and the discussions that we have with the insurance carrier, I feel that the city would be negligent if the road and sidewalk were left open and traffic is allowed to travel through that corridor. We are aware of the risks based on the report, the visual inspections, the physical cleanup of the bricks and debris that have fallen from the roof. So at this point, we are recommending we've closed down the actual road, as well as the sidewalk. But I want to also note that there are citizens that live in that area, and they've really been kind of shortsighted here because they can't park in their own area, so they're having to park back before we actually have the road closure. And as I said, also the foot traffic that continues, the bicyclists, the kids that are riding through that area, even though we have our barricades up. So my recommendation in talking with this group, as well as our insurance carrier, is that we fence off that road to really stop the traffic and eliminate the risk until the building is either torn down, or you decide to move forward. I just want to caution that, I know Donna has received some phone calls, as well as Chief Leck complaints, as well as feedback from the citizens stating that something needs to be done. Everybody's recognizing that there's a risk there. We're watching the building deteriorate. And from my perspective, I need you guys to keep in mind, every occurrence that would happen in the event that that building falls and there's any damage, the city has a self-insurance retention of $25,000 per occurrence. So if there's two cars, that's $50,000 that we're responsible for, out of pocket. So it's one of those things that's really been weighing heavily on all of our minds, and at this point, we decided that it's really time, based on this report, to take action.
Thanks, AJ.
You're welcome.
I know that Chief Leck was going to speak as well.
Yes, and besides the traffic concerns or the vehicles going through, there is that pedestrian concern. With the current barricading we have up there, there's no way to stop pedestrians or bicyclists from going through that area. The only way you're going to prevent that is if you completely fence it off with a high, six-foot-high fence to keep people out of there. And we're using the consultant's report that kind of indicated, indicates what the debris field would be if it falls toward the roadway, and so it'd be our recommendation that we even extend that fencing line a little closer to the north, curb and gutter line. I think we'd be okay keeping the north sidewalk open, which will allow that residents that are in the north side of East South Street and that between Fifth and Sixth. So we believe that it would definitely, you know, prevent people from going through there to have that higher fencing up there, and we could ensure that nobody's going to be in there if something falls off the building or a wall collapse.
Thanks, Greg. Chief Wagner?
So this year, although we haven't documented it very well, we've actually seen some accelerated deterioration. One of my larger concerns is still how accessible that building is, despite our efforts to actually block it off. When the squatters were actually present, and when I was going down there to measure their progress as far as moving off the property, one of them actually told me something about the building that very few people would actually know about inside. So that led me to believe that other people are in that building, and that is just unacceptable as far as allowing or even knowing. So, I'd agree with the fencing of the street. The fire department uses it as a standard for collapse zones, usually one and a half times the height. So there are some challenges in actually trying to get a 45-foot barrier, but I do think that going across the street would be a very good measure.
And just so folks know, that we have fenced that building, so folks aren't in that area anymore like they were earlier, or potentially earlier in the spring. I mean, I think we've alleviated that concern. Sure, AJ.
The other concern that I have is with the detour taking place, with Chief Wagner sitting next to me. We have additional traffic that's coming through the back street where the fire department, we do have trucks coming and going. So there's an additional risk that we're taking on there as well, because of the traffic that's being rerouted into that area. So we talked about that as well. We're going to try to have somebody be out there to spot, if we have enough people, but that's a whole different issue. But there's that concern with the additional traffic and emergency services coming out of that same road.
Back on Jefferson. Thank you. Rodney, any comments that you wanted to? I know Stephen sat in for your department and kind of shared similar concerns, and, okay, thank you. Comments from our older persons, or questions, I guess? Council President Swadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I guess my question is to the city attorney, based-
He's not here.
All right, well, then I'll wait until he comes back.
He'll be back.
See if anybody else has a question, and then I'll wait.
All right, you'll be back. Older person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to ask Stephen a couple of questions, if he could.
Maybe before I do, maybe I can comment on ways that you can get a little further coverage. Perhaps what we can do is we can use a taller fence, maybe a more stout fence, and maybe a fence that has some kickers that come back, so that if there is a fall-
I'm sorry, Stephen, could you speak into the, I can't, I can't hear.
Sorry. There are ways of augmenting the fence, so that if the fire department would like to see a better protection against that potential fall, there are ways of designing the fence to handle that, either by making it, you know, taller, or, you know, I understand that public safety is an issue, so if you were to put anything that might catch more debris, it might impede the police's view into the area, you know, it's a kind of a, anyway. Yes, sir?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Just addressing Regina's concern regarding sealing up the building. I mean, that's part of your option one, I'm assuming, right?
Well, option one would be, you know, as soon as possible, to remove the opportunity for lateral forces to work against those tall vertical walls.
Right. But I mean, your option one is basically to make it into a shell to be ready to be buildable?
Correct. Yeah, it'd be a shell with floors, and the floors would provide lateral stability.
Right. And that, I mean, that process actually does what Regina's looking for, is to not only structurally seal the building, but, or structurally, make the building structurally sound, but actually sealing the roof and everything else.
Yes.
It makes it into a box, so that's the option one.
That would be a much larger interim solution.
Right.
Larger in terms of cost, yes.
Right. And then, my second question is, as a preservation architect, from your experiences, you know, people go by this building and they look at it as a piece of junk, it looks lousy, it's horrible-looking building. What would that building look like, fully restored? Would it be an attractive building, or would it look like an old piece of junk building that's restored?
With nice windows.
What's your opinion of that?
My opinion is that it could be made to look very nice. If you look at, I think it was a, it was kind of a minor factory building at the Miro Plant in Manitowoc.
Manitowoc, yeah.
Yeah. And it was, it was done very carefully and done in such a way that, it looks great. Now, there's one in Fort Atkinson, that's another excellent example of a factory building that was not in this condition when they restored it. But there are hundreds, if not thousands, of examples of factory buildings, just by the virtue of all the natural light that they let in, so.
But I guess, in your opinion, it can be restored to be as safe as any building around.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Swadley, and then Hirsch.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my questions were to Attorney Dragney. Based on the agenda here, is it possible for us to make some motions or recommendations to the RDA? Because that was one of the things that they had requested we do when we had our joint meeting last week, and I'm wondering if I would have an opportunity to do that tonight.
Under item five or under item six?
Either one, I can-
What kind of recommendations?
Well, it would be, one option would be to have them put together a bid package for the demolition. Another option would be to direct or recommend, whatever term is the most appropriate, to have the RDA re-contact those other contractors, developers that responded to the RFP. And that would be Gorman Company and moving out to see if they have any continued interest in redeveloping all or part of the building.
If the intent there is to gather information relating to item five, the street closure and the designation of that building as a historic structure, you know, if that's your intention, I think that's okay. I think we might have to see more specifically what exactly you want to do. I don't think the council can direct the RDA to tax, take action, but, because that council doesn't really have that authority over the RDA, but-
Right, and that was one of the clarifications I was looking for.
Yep.
Okay. So, I guess, I mean, others can talk and we can come back, but those are two things that are on my mind right now. So before we end discussion, if somebody else doesn't make that type of motion, I'd like to have an opportunity to do so.
Older person, Hirsch.
Thank you. A couple of questions directed to Steve. Seems how you're here, we're going to make you speak.
It's fine. I could use the palsthenics.
As this, we're supposed to be talking about the Highway Trailer Building being designated as a local landmark. Can you explain what that is, and if, and if it is designated, what we can and cannot do to those buildings? And then the part two, because of the structure integrity of some of those buildings might be, you think that they are repairable, but what if they aren't repairable? How does that tax credit work, the historical tax credit, not next to the landmark's tax credit?
Okay, so the first question was-
Landmarks designation.
Okay, so, I'll just briefly explain the difference between landmarks and national record of historic places, or national, yeah. So, would that be helpful? Okay, so, there is the National Record of Historic Places, NRHP, and that is simply a federal and state-run program that allows for tax credits to be used for the preservation of historic structures. There is, there is no real obligation, as long as tax credits aren't used, as long as tax monies aren't used, to offset the cost of restoration. So, there is no obligation if it's on the national register. You can tear it down, you can do whatever. The, and there are, there are some caveats to that, but I won't get into the minutia. But, if it becomes a local landmark, then that's a different animal. That's where the building has some protection, and it has to go through the Landmarks Commission, and it has to go through that process. You can't simply go and get a demolition permit, you have to get a certificate of appropriateness for demolition, so you can be, can held up in that process. So, if this building becomes a local landmark, the demolition of the building or any part of it is going to become a bit more complicated. Could I just mention one other thing on that, because I've been working with the Landmarks Commission on this issue?
Yeah.
If the, if a structure is designated as a local landmark, the way the city's ordinances are currently drafted, demolition is not possible. The Chapter 38 does not allow for demolition of such a structure. And that's one of the questions that the Landmarks Commission decided to continue addressing, which is, what standards do they believe should apply to a proposed demolition of a historic structure? How should such a request be evaluated? But under the current ordinances, it's clear that they can't authorize it.
Can I follow up? Where are we in designating these buildings as local landmarks? Have paperwork been put in? I'm just curious.
Commission-
Because I know that they were talking at landmarks.
So, you know, even though I'm a commissioner, I'm not fully versed in the process, but what has happened is the commission has approved, out of its funds, the writing of the application for landmarking, I believe, just the Blacksmith Shop as a local landmark. And, and that person has been notified, they have not done their work, they were hoping to get it done within the next two to three weeks. Once that happens, then it comes to landmarks. More than likely, it's going to make it through, that we're going to recommend that it be landmarked, and then it's going to come, I believe, in front of this body. Is that correct? I think that's correct. And then, and then you guys get to take the football from there.
There's a public hearing on August 10th.
Right, 10th.
I'm probably wrong, but I thought it was to designate, designate the entire building as a local landmark.
Entire.
The entire building is my understanding.
All right. Yep.
Yeah. Sure.
Just one quick question. I haven't read the report, and I haven't stayed close to this project. In your, in your work of the building, was there any evidence of a fire?
Well, it's, you know, wood rot and damage from fire are kind of, and I- Well, it's, you know, wood rot and, and damage from fire are kinda, and, and I don't ever remember seeing anything. You're shaking your head, yes, was there a fire?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't, because I didn't get inside, I, I don't really, see, I, I see some areas where there was some damage to brick that I couldn't quite explain. It could be that there was some heat inside that caused some spalling of the brick.
And, and the reason I bring that up is I was away from the city in the mid and late 60s, but I did get the courier hub, so, there was a fire, and I believe it was at that building, because there was a fatality, and I knew that person. But, oh, I, I was wondering if there was any kind of a property search or any discussions with the previous owners of the building as to why they shut down, or whether they ever went back into business after that fire. I, I think that's kind of important. I'm not a structural engineer, but I know what heat can do to structures, and it, if it hasn't been looked at, it might be something for the city to consider.
And actually, a wood structure is one of the, a timber structure like that is actually one of the safest in a fire, because of the nature of timber construction. I saw no evidence that there was anything that was fire-related, but the, the process you talked about is more on the historical side, doing that sort of research, but it's possible that there are some issues related to that, but that would come out, I think, as things progress down the line. And does anybody, can anybody, I mean, do you know how extensive the fire was?
All I know is that the fatality was smoke-related.
Okay.
But, I, after that, and I just saw a picture in the, in the hub, and I think it was that building, I'm remembering it at that time, but I don't know if they ever went back into production. I think then the highway trailers actually moved to Edgerton after that, but again, I was away from town, but it might be worth questioning some of the people that had it.
Thank you. Elder Person Mieski, and then Truul.
Yes, so, let's just say for sake of argument that the entire building is designated as a landmark by the National.
Local or national?
And it's, it's eligible for tax credits.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, explain to me the advantage of that versus, the class difference would be between option one and option two?
Yes, but there's a 40% currently until the budget passes. I know that that's one of the things that's being considered.
Right.
You know, is Wisconsin gonna continue with its 20%? So, it's a 40% tax credit, and then, of course, if the city is not paying for the demolition, let's just say for argument's sake that I wildly inaccurate, and it's a half a million, if the city were to kick in a half a million to the restoration of the building, half the cost of what I'm suggesting the demolition is, you start to, I mean, it's some fairly large numbers, and it helps to do exactly what those tax credits are intended to do.
But basically, what you're saying is, is that the difference between, with the tax credits, the difference between option one and option two is a wash?
It's close to a wash, yes, sir.
Thank you.
In my opinion.
Thank you. Elder Person Truul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two, two points. First, in terms of kind of a bit of history, when Peter Smeam and I had the opportunity to, to work with the Willeens, to actually, on behalf of the RDA, to obtain the building, just a, a frame of reference, at that point, Rodney, we were, the city staff was actually aggressively trying to get the.
Safety issues.
Safety issues resolved at that point, and in fact, the Stone Trailer folks actually had hired or were in the process of hiring a demolition contractor. One of our concerns was that, that the contractor was giving us a sense of, of an extended period of time that they would be taking down the building, and so that was going on when, when the RDA got involved in the, in the building, in purchasing the building and getting control of it, in part because we felt that if the, the city had the opportunity to get control of the building, we might qualify for grants and aids to help us take it down and, and get it done in an appropriate manner. So, just from, from a history standpoint, I want to remind folks that that was the status of the building when we purchased it seven years ago, I believe. But then a question for Steve. Again, you had indicated from a structural standpoint, when we talked last week, that part of the, the stability of the building is the, the structural waste of masonry that's there. So, again, can you explain to everyone, we've, my concern is that we went from last week talking about the state of disrepair of the building to, then the fact that we closed South Street and everything else, as if the whole building is gonna fall down. You made a comment last week, you said, "The building is in such bad repair that it would actually, bad shape, that it would be easy to repair." Can you, can you talk about some of the elements? There's, there's an element of, and again, I'm not to speak for you, but, but where I'm going specifically is one of the pictures you showed was sort of the, the outer layers of brick that we know are falling off, and that becomes part of a safety issue, but as you said, again, structurally behind it, there's multiple layers.
I appreciate that, thank you for bringing that to my attention again. So, what I did mention is, it is, it is true, there is so much mortar loss in these walls that to re-point them, by and large, there's not a lot of removal that has to take place. In other words, you can simply re-point them if they are structurally sound. There is so much brick in this wall, they're a minimum of 12 and sometimes 24 inches and more thick, not unlike Garver Mill in Madison, if you're familiar with, with that, it's a big hulking brick thing, and there's a lot of openings in it, but again, like I said, the openings aren't so bad, but there is an awful lot of masonry there, and, and the restoration of it is not as, let's say, daunting in, in my mind, in terms of doing a budget or actually getting the work done, as many other buildings that are in far better condition. So, I'm sorry, does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Elder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I don't have a question, but I, on Elder Swadley's comments regarding what to do with this building, and what our options are, I think there's a lot of different things we need to consider. You know, are we gonna tear it down? Are we gonna try to get it restored? What are our options? And I think with the RDA joint meeting we had, there was interest from the RDA, from what I understood, that they would like some direction from the council on this development, on what, where, where are we at? Where's the council at, on, you know, what do you want to do? So, I would just ask the RDA to find out from Gorman, who gave us a bid previously, to see if they would, would still honor that bid as, as an option, and, you know, that, that could be a solution right there. That could be something where they could come in and say, you know, "We looked at the building previously, we understand the condition, we gave you a bid on what, what we think it will take, and now if this report changes any of that," maybe it will, maybe it won't, but I, I don't think they would give you a bid of what, what they gave us without taking a look at the building to see what kind of shape it was in. I think that's an option we need to explore. If we can have that situation, that would probably take care of our problem. I think the immediate need is probably number six, where, you know, we're looking at making things safe, but we gotta look beyond that for, are we gonna save it? Are we gonna demo it? What are we gonna do? So, that's one of our options, and I would, I would just suggest that we ask the RDA to do that.
Okay, and is that a motion that he can make at this time, Matt?
Your Honor, I, I don't think it's necessary, candidly, not to speak for Regina, but I'm confident that the two of us are gonna be recommending that that's where we go, and, and go back and talk to Gorman. As, as, as we all were aware, we have been going down a process of development for the rest of the mill fab site, and, again, as a, as a backdrop, we had, the RDA had gone out for a master developer, and as a part of that, we got one proposal as a master developer. We then were also, had received the individual proposals for both from, from Gorman and also from Moving Out for the other properties. As we all know, last week, our master developer said at this time, he's stepping back to wait and see what's up, so we really don't have any other option at that point, and I think there's, there certainly is enough interest on the part of council, and I think the community that, again, not to speak for Regina, but I'm confident that, that at the next meeting.
You can speak for me.
We'll be, we'll be making that motion and trying to see where we go, so I don't know that it needs to be, you know, anything official. It's a promise from our standpoint that that's, that's our next step.
Okay, all right, thank you, Elder Person Truul. Further comments or discussion? Councilperson Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks for offering to do that. And then the other option is, you know, should we take the opportunity to look and see what a demolition cost would, would be? You know, because if we decide that we're gonna have to go down that road, shouldn't we begin that process now? So, at least when we get all the information together, we have all of our options, and ultimately, you know, I guess, maybe the RDA, I mean, who's gonna make that decision? You know, so, that's what I want to talk a little bit about, is process as well, so everybody understands how this thing's gonna go, and depending, you know, the outcome, I don't know what it's gonna be, but at least how we're gonna get there, I think should be clear to everybody what the expectations are gonna be, so at the end of it, there's no hard feelings.
Okay, Elder Person Truul, and then Hirsch.
I'll defer to Regina first.
Can I speak for you now?
Absolutely.
Um, I think, I think what the RDA really wanted from last week's meeting was to get an idea of what the council wants, and I think we, that's why we had Steve come to this meeting today, to get everybody a briefing, and I guess it'd be nice to know going forward what, where we actually stand before we get a demolition. If everybody is interested in saving the building, or the majority is interested in saving the building, and Gorman isn't interested anymore, then we need to write an RFP to get another, you know, developer that would be interested in it. So, I think we need to follow what the council is actually thinking, and give that direction to the RDA, because other words, RDA's going back, going, we still don't know what they really want.
And in that regard, and that's kind of where I was going with, it would be good for the council, for the council to make a motion, so that it's, it's not just, a couple of folks have made comments, it's what the council as a body has decided to send forward, and, and I'm gonna throw this out there too, to be cognizant of those homeowners along that, along that area. There is one, there are two on the outside of that 500 and 600 block who can access their homes. They'll be, they'll be inconvenienced, but they can still access it, okay, but there is a homeowner right in the middle, right in the middle, that when we build this fence, they will be more than inconvenienced, and we talked about that last week, and I, I haven't, nor have we, come up with an answer to how will that family reach their home? I mean, that's just something, I don't know the answers, that's something I wanted to share.
Even if we demolish it, it's gonna take months and months, I mean.
Right, I'm just throwing it out there so that we have that as, as a point of contact as well. And now that I've talked, I forget where I'm going. Elder Person, you're not an elder person. How about an attorney?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments that I, I was asked to be potentially prepared to talk about the RDA and the city council and procedural issues, and Elder Person Swadley indicated a, a concern about understanding kind of process. There is actually a formal process that the statute lays out relating to how the RDA and the city council are supposed to go about doing their work, and in general terms, what it anticipates is that the redevelopment authority is charged with preparing a proposed redevelopment plan, and actually, there is one that has been approved and amended, I think at least once, maybe a couple times over time historically for this area. So, the redevelopment authority is charged with, with preparing that plan, and, and then it has to operate, I think, within the context of that plan, and then that plan also can be something that's binding on developers down the road. And once a developer acquires the property, developer has a right to rely on that plan. So, that's, so the redevelopment authority is charged initially with that responsibility to prepare it. City council has the authority to decide whether to approve that plan or not, and as I say, we do have an approved plan now. We seem to be at a point where there's a concern about whether the plan is still viable. Maybe, maybe people don't continue to believe it's an appropriate plan. So, the plan can be amended, and so that, to me, the question was, what's the most appropriate, and from a long-term perspective, what's the most appropriate strategy for the city council and the RDA to move forward ultimately to a successful kind of redevelopment project? And I understand that the desire that the RDA has for feedback from the council, as the RDA's gonna go back to the table now and try and decide how do we go forward, and so what I, what I don't necessarily have the best answer to, because I'm not exactly sure what the right answer is, is what's the best way for the RDA to get some input from the council as it's working on a plan? But I think what should probably happen is, the RDA should come back to the council at some point with a proposed amended redevelopment plan that addresses whatever needs to be addressed, and in the, and in doing that, I suppose, it's, it's, there's nothing wrong with the, with the RDA perhaps seeking some input from the council, but one of the things that's clear is that this is a complicated project, and I think it's important for both the RDA and the city council, as they're thinking about how to move forward, to not focus on only one question, but make sure they're, they're also looking at the bigger redevelopment plan, to make sure everything still works and holds together. So, I think there's probably a variety of ways that the RDA can seek input from the council, but I think procedurally, what you're probably working towards ultimately is an amendment, either a decision that you're gonna stay with the current plan that's already been approved, or you're gonna approve an amendment to that plan, and that amendment clearly is gonna have to address the, the buildings we've been talking about tonight. It may need to address other issues that the council is concerned about. So, I guess the concern I have is, how do we do this in an organized way to get you ultimately to the place you want to be, which is a plan that both the RDA and the city council are supportive of and are willing to move forward with, and that then you can use that to move forward with, if you need to do another RFP, you've got a plan. If you're trying to negotiate a development agreement with a developer, you've got a plan that the city council and the RDA are both behind. And so I think that's where you're trying to get, and I think the question is, how, how does the council talk to the RDA about that in the meantime?
Thank you.
What plan are you referring to?
So, if you go to the city's website, and, and I'm, I'm not the expert on the plans, because I haven't been the RDA's real consultant through this process, there've been other people that have been involved, but as I understand it, back in 2008, I think, or 2009, there was a redevelopment plan approved. I believe that plan has been amended, maybe once, maybe twice. There's something on the website that I'm having trouble accessing, which is referred to as a neighborhood plan for this area, like a preferred development scenario, something like that. As I understand it, these are all plans that were approved following the statutory process, and, and those form the basis for the RDA's work, under the statute at least, as of this point in time. So, if the council is saying to the RDA, or if the RDA is saying, you know, "We want to change things now," I think what you need to be working towards is changing that plan.
Thank you. Elder Person Truul.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I think that's really the key. That's, that's kind of how we've gotten where we are. When we went out for the RFP for the master developer, we actually referenced that, that development plan, but one of the things that was a part of that plan, based on RDA action, was the assumption that the highway trailer building was gonna be taken down. So, effectively, that's part of what happened with our, our master developer, because he had, he had put in a proposal based on, on those assumptions, and during the course of the time, over the last six months, nine months, we've gone through the process of talking about wanting to, as a, as a council, trying to save something at this, at this building, whether it was the whole building, or the actual action that we took on, on a number of months ago, that Alderman Jensen had proposed, which was to save the blacksmith building. So, one way or another, we were gonna have to go back potentially and look at, at, at the plan modification. I think for me personally, and I guess what I would, would ask, your indulgence on this is, is that I think we began again with, with reaching out to the Gorman group, who gave us a proposal to redevelop the highway trailer building, and, and first find out, again, their interest and what, what may need to happen. Depending on what happens with their interest, then, then we can figure out what that next step is, again, whether we need to go back out and look for, for, most likely to adjust our, our development plan, if it's the will of the council and the will of the, of the city to, to keep the buildings in some shape, we need to adjust our, our development plan to, to reflect that, and then go out and look for, for other folks that might be interested. But that's one of my concerns about kind of the, the element of, of making it a landmark at the moment, and that is, what if there isn't interest? What if we can't find someone that will do some things? Are we binding ourselves by moving to that point? At the end of the day, we realize right now that, that I can't imagine anything happening that wouldn't ultimately, that the RDA would. that wouldn't ultimately, that the RDA wouldn't, any action that the RDA wouldn't take at this point, that wouldn't have to come back to council with full approval. And where I'm going with this is, if we find someone that's willing to, to redevelop the building, then we're going to want to take advantage of what Steve was talking about. The tax credits are there, we're going to want to go everything there. But if we find ourselves and go back out with another request for proposals, and should the Gorman Group not be interested, and we need to go out and look for other folks, if we can't find other folks, what I don't want to do is tie us in a situation where we've made it a landmark, so we can't fix it. And our only option is, is, as Alderman Engelberger was suggesting, that, that we effectively would have to do that two and a half million dollar improvement ourselves. Because part of what ends up happening is when we take down the wood structure that's there, we need to create that roof, and it becomes part of the diaphragm, it becomes part of the support system for those walls. And that's, that's, you know, very important, and, and we can't go into it, baby steps won't get there. We're, we're going to have to make a commitment all the way if we're going to make those kind of improvements. And so all I would ask is, is that we not bind our own hands by trying to make it a landmark at the moment until we see what our, what our next steps are. Again, I will pledge, I'm the vice chair of the committee, Regina's on the committee, or on the authority, you know, that we're going to, we'll, we'll, we'll do it deliberately, and we'll reach out and, and try and see what our options are, again, with, with the interest of the parties that are already expressed interest. Should they not, should, should the Gorman Group not be interested in talking, we will let you know right away. And, and come back and say, okay, now what would you like to do? But I think part of the questions we were asking as, in the joint meeting last week, was in anticipation that we were trying to meld a master development plan with, with potentially some options to save the, the Blacksmith Building, and we're being asked about possibly still playing a role with, with moving out. And as an RDA, we were looking for direction. Well, through the actions that happened last week, the master developer isn't on the table anymore. So now we're back to looking at those other options. And, and with regard to moving out, that raises a whole nother issue that we've all, we've been talking about more and more over the last few months. And that is, where do we want to see mixed housing? And, and looking at options. And, and we want to, I think the council has, has certainly taken some actions and expressed interest in, in making sure that, that we have a mixed use of housing all over the city, and we don't have particularly density spots or other things. And obviously, I'm trying to be careful based on, on, on what the city attorney had recommended to us about trying to have an affirmative policy of trying to have housing, you know, mixed housing all over the place. But that also comes into the discussion about the moving out motions and, and kind of where they're going. So all I ask is, is that you let us to have as much flexibility to try and explore our future options. But the bottom line is, on some level, we're back at square one.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I understand what we're, Alder Scott is, what he's saying there. You know, the thing is, we, we have to, we have to, I mean, you don't just try to see if somebody will do something and then go along with it. I think we need to determine as a council whether we're interested in preserving that Highway Trailer Building or not. There is a process ongoing right now that, in August, early August, there's going to be a public hearing about it. And the, the process is already in motion. So I, I think regardless whether somebody right now is interested in fixing it, or if they're not interested in fixing it, or if we have to go get other people to look at it or not look at it, we need to decide as a body, are we interested in saving that building? So I'm just going to make a motion that, that this, this council go on record supporting designation of the Highway Trailer Building as a local landmark by our, our Landmarks Commission. And we can have discussion and see where we stand.
Okay, we're going to let Lana get that written down.
Point of order then. So my question's for Attorney Dragney.
For a second or not?
Second.
I want to make sure the motion is in order because there is a process for the designation. And I'm not going to pretend to know it off the top of my head. And part of that has already been determined, and that's the public hearing. And I don't know if we can take action until that's occurred.
I believe that public hearing brings it back to the common council for approval. Is that correct? I'm looking at Stephen. And Matt, both. After the public hearing, does not that landmark recommendation come to the council for the council's discussion and approval at that time?
That's my understanding, yes.
If they designate.
He's getting the book out.
To be designated.
If they, if they designate it, then it comes here.
For the council to approve or not? Correct.
If they recommend it.
Right.
It needs to be nominated, that nomination needs to be complete for us to consider it. And once that has happened.
So if that nomination is not, if, I, I think I heard you say earlier that the nomination is not yet complete.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Gail Klein has, like I said, has been retained to do that work. She should get that done before the public meeting.
Right, she'll have to, correct?
Understood, yes, yes, yes. That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, what's the point?
I just wanted to be sure that I was on that same. Attorney Dragney.
Yeah, there is a process of the ordinances by which landmark designation can take place, and we, we're not there yet. The, the land, there needs to be a public hearing by the Landmarks Commission, they need to make a recommendation, and then it would come to council. So I don't believe it's properly before the council tonight for landmark designation.
So according to-
If I could, Your Honor, I'm not asking us to make this a landmark tonight. I'm asking us to go on record whether we are interested in having it as a landmark or not. And have that discussion so, so the three RDA people that are here can hear the discussion and see if there's interest in this council. If the interest is, you know, seven to three, or, or three to seven. Let's find out what it is.
Designation of the Highway Trailer Building as a local landmark is on our agenda tonight. So I, I would deem that motion to be in order. So there's a-
What's the motion?
Motion by Engelberger, second by Johnson, to support the designation of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building as a local landmark.
It's a pregame.
As long as it's understood that this is not actually making the designation, it's just an expression of support.
Absolutely understood, yeah, that's not part of my motion.
How do we make that clear though, so that future folks don't look back at these minutes and go, oh, you did it right there?
We just hit the process, we just hit the action.
Right, right. So I think if we've learned nothing, understanding, we need to make it clear, right? So that everybody looking back understands, right?
It's like a pre-engagement ring.
That's right. Just like-
Just straw pull.
Promise ring.
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
Is there, is there a way, is there a way to, to do that without having?
Just have a straw roll, raise your hand.
Well, we do have a motion and a second, right?
We do have a motion and a second right now, so let's do it that way.
It's been ruled to be in order. I think everyone understands it's not an actual designation.
Maybe Lana can identify that in the minutes that, in, in some way, she'll figure that out. There's been a motion and a second. Further comments about-
Can you read the motion again?
It's a motion by Engelberger requesting that the council support the designation of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building as a local landmark. There we go, support. Okay, I think Council President Swadley has something to say.
Thank you, Your Honor. So will that vote end this discussion, or can we continue the discussion after the vote?
No, we can go on. I think we're going to, we're going to vote by rule, just so we know where we stand.
We don't have more discussion on this?
Pardon me?
So we don't have more?
Oh, yes, some discussion, but when we vote, we'll vote by rule so that we understand it's more than, it might be confusing.
We can't have discussion on this, but what I want to discuss isn't related to the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so further discussion on the motion on the floor.
I guess the question I would ask, it would go along with Scott, is if we decided to do this, and then do we, all of a sudden, do we have the cart before the horse, and we're backwards, we're handcuffed? And if this were to happen, and maybe you can answer this question for me, let's say the building does fall down, and it's designated as a landmark, do we have to restore it at that point?
I can't answer that. I would, I would think not.
But you would think not, but we're not sure.
But I, I couldn't answer that. That's, that, I, I don't know. Demolition by neglect is, is a bad thing.
Oh, but it happens.
But it happens, it's right. And it would be difficult, I think, for the city if this, if that happened under the city's watch, of course. But I don't, you would, can't imagine the circumstance where you'd be obligated to recreate it.
Well, the thing that I'm looking at is, we already know the building's in a little bit of disrepair. And the longer we wait, the more problems we have.
And the longer you wait, the, the rate of increase of the problems is going to increase. So I mean, it's, it's exponential.
So we're looking at three weeks for the, the meeting, the public?
August 10th.
So that's then, and then you'll come back to here. And then if it sits here for another one, so I mean, in, in essence, we could be looking at two, two months.
Yes, that's correct.
And so what could happen in two months? So I think we'd-
A lot of things, yeah.
Be in serious problem to have it as being a landmark until we have the RDA go out and do their research first.
Attorney Dragney.
Just to be clear, this vote is meaningless.
I know it is, but we're, we're doing a straw pull kind of thing, and we're giving our opinions. So I think that's important.
Yeah, and if it comes back, if, if it comes back then after the public hearing and after a landmarks commission designation, none of you would be bound by the vote you make tonight. You could make a different vote at that later meeting.
I'm all for restoring it. I mean, I'll say that right now, I'm all for it. I think it would be a beautiful thing for that area. There'd be like the third ward in Milwaukee, the kind of thing that we would have. But I don't like the idea that we could possibly set ourselves up for failure.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
Can I make an amendment to the motion? Instead of designating as a local landmark, having the straw pull, the interest in the council to preserve the Highway Trailer Buildings? And so we're not, instead of the binding words of local landmark, but the preservation of the Highway Trailer, so it's a little bit more floppy language that isn't so scary?
Tell us your motion, though.
To change the wording from designation of local landmark to preservation of Highway Trailer Building.
Accepted.
Need a second on that.
Sorry.
Sure.
I apologize, but could you add, would you consider adding, adding the word complex?
Complex. Highway Trailer Building complex.
That would be the entirety of the site.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to let Lana catch up here. I have the amendment. I didn't catch the second, I apologize. Kittleson.
The amendment by Hirsch is requesting that the council preserve the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building complex.
I thought that the intent was to express its support for preserving the-
Yep.
Yep.
Right, she's just changing the words from support for a local landmark to preservation of the Highway Trailer Complex.
The preservation. Is that better?
So you can actually do that as a substitute motion rather than an amendment?
Well, but she's got an amendment on the floor, so let's proceed.
Well, I mean, is that, aren't we trying to do it as a substitute instead of an amendment? I mean, that's, that'd be the motion, actually, which is great. That's fine to me.
See what, see where you guys are.
All right, so it's, it's changed now. So it's not an amendment, we'd like to call it a substitute motion.
Make sure the language is acceptable.
So the, the new language of the motion, I have, is requesting that the council express its support for the preservation of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building complex.
So that's our substitute motion, which replaces the original motion. Further discussion on the substitute motion? We'll vote by roll call. I'm sorry, Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick statement. My, I'm on record, I want to preserve the Blacksmith out. I do not want to preserve the complex. Everybody I've talked to wonders why in the world we're still, we're debating this. They want it gone. They want the whole thing gone. They want green space. I think it's ridiculous that we're, that we're doing this. We're, we're talking about a huge sum of money. I can't support this because we're talking about the complex. So my vote will be no.
Okay, thank you. We will vote by roll call.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mijasky.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
No.
Trul.
No.
O'Connor.
No.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of eight to three.
All right, thank you, that motion carries. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanted to communicate that earlier tonight at the Finance Committee meeting, I asked for a future agenda item, that the Finance Committee try to have a joint meeting with the RDA, or at least engage in a conversation related to the financial opportunities and options we may have for this project. It's been brought to my attention that there really hasn't been a discussion on what our potential borrowing limits could be if we were to take on a project of this magnitude.
Thank you. Further comments regarding Agenda Item Number Five? Otherwise, I think we're prepared to move on to Agenda Item Six, which is discussion and possible action regarding, I'm sorry, which comes from our Finance Committee. Alder Person O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor, for a discussion on possible action regarding approval of funding for additional fencing and barricades for the East South Street closure. Finance Committee met tonight and approved the estimate by National Construction Rentals in the amount of $1,763. Lana pointed out that we wouldn't pay taxes, so it'd be a little shorter than that, or smaller than that, but I move approval of the contract.
So motion by O'Connor, second by Trul. Alder Person O'Connor.
I don't know that we need to say too much more, but-
Contingency.
I think it makes sense, and all of us here are probably going to support it.
Okay, important to note that this is a six-month cost, correct?
Right.
Finance Director, the board.
Also, the committee discussed where the funds would come from, and they recommended the contingency.
Council President, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go over here first. AJ.
My question ties into what Stephen had said in regards to the different type of fencing that he's making the recommendation for. Does that type of fencing that we have the approval for tonight meet the requirements that he's talked about?
I don't know how tall these are, Rodney. Can you tell?
No, it does not.
It does not, okay.
So would that be an additional expense, is just my question?
If you wanted to have a reinforced fence, it would, it would have to be a different type than this. The distance from the fall zone is farther than what was depicted on the plan, but it's certainly not, not worthy of any, it's not going to hold any debris. Falling one, one brick, maybe, but not failure.
Good note. Police Chief Lex. It was your question as well, okay. So that's Finance Chair, O'Connor.
Did you talk to Civic about it, and is the fence that they kind of recommended, or?
They did not get involved in that at all whatsoever. What they did is looked at the report, and then listened to some of our feedback and comments and concerns that we had, and then made that recommendation. They were not involved at all whatsoever in the type of fencing that was going up.
Okay. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. My question is for Stephen regarding this. With the fence, I knew, I see you had some red lines on your drawings that went like halfway out into the road. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we don't close the road off completely, but I guess my suggestion would be that to address the driveway, that the house that's in the middle, have a small, you know, eight foot or 10 foot or whatever from the curb, little driveway into their place where the fence goes around that and then up back to the curb. So it still blocks the road off, but allows that car to get into their driveway in the middle. Is that a feasibility, or is that in the danger zone?
I, I really don't want to-
I'm going to look to our public safety folks. I'm gonna look to our public safety folks. No offense, Stephen, but I know that they had made a recommendation to go full length of the street because of falling potential.
I would just point out that that's an approximate fall zone, so it needs to be engineered.
Okay, I'm just wondering, and that would allow somebody to get into the driveway?
Yep.
The only comment I'll make is that the resident there does not use their driveway currently. They park on the street. So, I mean, they're, they're gonna lose their access either way.
Well, even if he could drive up and park in front of his house, but then the fence would still block the road.
Yeah, but if, I think our concern would be if you look at the corner of the building there is directly across from their driveway, and quite honestly, that's been one of the corners that we've been most concerned about, its deterioration. And, you know, if something let loose there, then there's, I mean, you know, it could fall on their vehicle very easily.
I appreciate what you were trying to do, Michael. I had those similar questions, but for safety purposes, I don't know that that, that would work. Further comments regarding the fence, and I think we're gonna have to acknowledge that there may be a not-to-exceed cost, since this fence may or may not be as strong as council would wish. Alderperson Trul.
And thank you, Your Honor. And to that point, this fence is a, as I understand it, in looking at the bid, it's to keep people out, not to catch the building. That's the difference. And again, you know, effectively, you know, if you want to get to the point of talking about what our possibility is, we could build other walls alongside it, and all those types of things, hopefully that's not necessary. What we're really, what I believe we're really doing with this motion is, and this action is, doing a much better job of preventing people from going alongside the building than just putting barricades out there. You know, we're gonna force them across. Unfortunately, it does have the impact on, on the folks across the street, but I, I would tell you, my guess would be, the numbers we're looking at would be miniscule compared to what kind of numbers we would be talking about if we actually had to create a truly reinforced fence of the height that might be necessary, whether, whether we'd be putting additional steel framing, or wood framing, or other things. This is, this is to keep people out of the area. So, don't, don't misunderstand. So, I, I mean, even to the point of saying a not-to-exceed, this is, this is just to keep people out. It's not going to stop any, any real degradation of the building.
All right, thank you. Additional comments? We'll vote by roll call.
Kittleson.
Yes.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlet.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Resolution 83 of 2017 comes from our Redevelopment Authority. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually am gonna move to table this item until our next, frankly, until the state budget is approved. And so, if I could make the motion to table, please.
Second.
So, motion to table by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
And again, as a frame of reference, when we first brought this, we have had this, this demolition contract out there for a while. Again, it was, it was my feeling and the feeling of the RDA that we weren't ready to issue this contract until we got the commitment from the state for the matching grant. Again, we're talking about an expense of $339,000, of which we'll, we potentially are gonna get $150,000 match from the state. That grant was supposed to be issued by the second week of July, but that was assuming that the state budget would be adopted. Obviously, the state budget has not been adopted, so that grant has not been issued. And I believe we've been staying in contact with the demolition contractor, so hopefully this will be resolved as soon as the state figures out its, its budget issues.
Thank you. So, a motion to table isn't debatable. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. New business begins with Resolution 112 of 2017 from our Finance Committee. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 112, 2017, to authorize and direct proper city officials to enter into an agreement with RG Houston Company for the 2017 Business Park Detention Basin Contract 2-2017. And Finance Committee met tonight and approved 4 to 0.
There's a motion by O'Connor. Is there a second? Second by Trul. Alderperson O'Connor.
This is out at the new Business Park, where NAF is being located. $500,000 was budgeted, and the bid came in at about $478,000.
Correct, thank you. Comments or questions? Alderperson Mieske.
I'll vote for this, but one comment would be after looking at the plans for it. Hopefully, in the future, we start to be a little more creative with our detention ponds, so they don't look so engineered, so they look a little more natural. We have a little more, we have, we have a little bit more naturalistic look to them. Other communities do it, they look great. Ours, they're functional. That's about all you can really say about them. So, like I said, it's necessary, we'll need to put this one in, but in the future, I'd really like to see planning put together much more flexible and better designs for naturalistic-looking water bodies.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
I've got a question, and Pat, maybe you can answer this. Is this just for the, it's for the area?
For the area, isn't it, Rodney?
Yeah, it's for the region, it's not just for-
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Further comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Resolution 113 of 2017 also comes from our Finance Committee. Alderperson O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 113, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Raymond P. Cattell Incorporated of Madison for the 2017 Trual Beach Parking Lot Contract 3-2017. Finance Committee met tonight, approved it unanimously, and I move approval.
Second.
Motion by O'Connor, second by Trul. Alderperson O'Connor.
These two came under budget to replace the parking lot. Budgeted was $249,000, and the bid amount is $197,000. Be completed this fall.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding Resolution 113?
RDA borrow a few of those extra dollars.
Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to review Resolution 114 of 2017. Alderperson Johnson.
Do you want me to read it to myself again?
No, not to yourself, out loud. We'll clarify that, please, out loud.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. The council may meet in closed session per State Statute 19.851E to consider the proposed 2018 Police Department Union Contract. The council may reconvene in open session to take action on matters discussed in closed session. Thank you.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Connor. We'll vote by roll call. Before we vote by roll call? Okay.
So, I guess a question would be for Human Resource Director. Is there any background information you could give before we go into closed session?
She'll be here. She'll stay.
Well, something that the public may want to hear, or-
Yeah, exactly what was provided in the packet. We have three items at hand that they're asking for within the contract that we've tentatively agreed to. Item number one being that it's, first of all, it's a one-year contract, and the reason that we're looking at a one-year contract versus the standard two-year, it's just what's happening out in the healthcare market. We would have to reopen if we did a two-year anyway, so we decided it would make most sense to go with a one-year contract. The second thing is, what they were asking for is for us to match with their holidays, adding one additional holiday to match what city staff currently has, which would be the addition of the day after Thanksgiving. And then, the residency requirement, they're asking to change back, emphasis on the word "back," to the 45 miles from what it exists, what it is existing, which is 20. So, we're gonna go back, revert back to the 45. And from my standpoint, that helps from our recruiting. The recruiting side gives us a better pool to look at, and allows more flexibility for the staff. And then, the third item is a 2.25% increase for the union officers. So, that's what they're asking for, and that's what we'll be talking about in closed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll vote by roll call to move into closed session. Oh, Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my question is, is there a reason to go into closed session?
Yes, yes, I feel there, as I have a couple of things I want to talk with the council about.
Should I say it again, third time's a charm? We'll vote by roll call.
Bartlet.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving back into open session, Resolution 114 of 2017 comes from Personnel. Alderperson Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. Personnel would like to present Resolution 114, 2017, resolution to authorize and direct the proper city officials to approve the 2018 Police Department Union Contract. Personnel approved 4 to 0 on June 20th, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mieske, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Mieske.
This contract is for a 2.5% pay increase for police, the police department, and a change in the residential, residential requirement from 20 to 45 miles from city limits.
Correct. AJ, did you wanna?
He forgot the holiday.
A couple, yeah, as well as recognizing the day after Thanksgiving.
And then, on that resolution, again, we need to strike the initial $14,000, and correct that to the $24,591.93.
Right, and I, I won't sign that contract until that table's been corrected.
Thank you.
Okay, further comments or discussion? We'll vote by roll call.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlet.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
That motion carries, thank you. Did someone want to share that with the folks that? Thank you. And then, there was a request earlier this evening to make a change to the remainder of our agenda. Agenda item number 11 will now be a request by Council President Swadley.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. So, I'm gonna start out by making the motion, and depending on how that goes, I may make a second motion. And the motion would be to direct the mayor to include an economic developer director position options before introducing the executive budget.
Second.
I'm just gonna refer to what Attorney Dregny has said, is that the council really can't direct to the budget. They can approve it or deny it as it comes forward.
I haven't heard that.
Matt, is that?
I don't know that the council can direct the mayor what to put in the mayor's budget. The council, you know, I'm not a budget expert.
I wasn't directing what was in the budget. What I was directing was that, making a policy decision to have the mayor present the city council options for an economic developer position before the budget is introduced. That's what I said.
Is that what you said?
That's what he said.
Say it again, so Lana gets it in the minutes.
I don't know if I can repeat it twice.
I know, yeah, say it three times.
The motion was to direct the mayor to include an economic developer director position options before introducing the executive budget. Basically, I wanted to create options before the budget is introduced.
So, I'm not sure what that means, and I'm not sure that the council can require the mayor to do that. I think what Tim's trying to say is that he'd like the mayor to explore financial impacts for the future, if we decided that the council would like to include an economic development director into the budget as a prudent measure, so that we're not destroying her budget for her.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I'm only questioning it because I don't want the same thing to happen as did the appointment and the reappointment, which turned out to be an unlawful measure. So, we want to be careful of, of how we're going, you know? If it's a committee of the council that wants to develop an economic development director position, I mean, I just want to be sure we're making the right steps.
I could make an amendment to that, that the council direct, the Finance Director, to come up with options for impact, the impact on, on city budget for a economic development director. That way, you're left out of it. The council is directed to-
You have the authority.
To give us those, give us options for different numbers, and that solves the problem.
We have to be sure that Council President Swadley is okay with that, right? I mean, this is an amendment or a substitute motion.
If that's what we have to do to get the discussion going, then we'll do it. I, I don't quite understand why we wouldn't be able to just simply ask the mayor to do that. It's, as far as I'm concerned, is, it's a policy decision, and we're basically setting policy that, you know, that's what we would do. Now, if that's not acceptable, we can certainly do that. I mean, it's gonna accomplish the same thing.
I think you need to go the other route. Sure, Alderperson Mieske.
It's pretty simple. I mean, mayor is the executive branch, she develops the budget. We cannot direct her on how to do that. All we can do is approve or deny, or change at council's floor. So, therefore, we have the staff do that work. Because the mayor can, can participate in it if she wants to with, with the Finance Director, or she may not.
Sure. And that's fine, but I want you to understand that my intent was not to tell her to include or not include anything in the budget. My intent was, and it still is, whether we do it that way, or we have the Finance Director do it, to have something, some options in front of us before we begin those discussions.
I'm gonna have the Finance Director answer, ask a question, I think, Tim?
I just have a quick question. Do you know what you want the Economic Development Director to do?
Well, that would be the second part, but basically, what I'm looking for is some options. So, there's different models. Could be full-time, could be part-time, could be somebody on staff, it could be contracted out, it could be a collaboration, it could be many things. So, what I'd like to do is have something brought to us, some different options, and we can discuss it. Now, if we think that the Finance Committee is the appropriate place for that, that's fine, I'm on the committee, that's, that's okay.
Would it be helpful to gather some sample job descriptions from around the area, and then possibly get some input from you as to whether or not you like certain things in this one or this one? Because a lot of what you're asking this person to do is going to determine the salary that's going to be needed, as well as a budget to accomplish what you want this person to accomplish.
Right, and that's my second motion.
I can ask this a little better.
That's my second motion.
And then, O'Connor is waiting.
I think what we're trying to do is you're crossing over into Personnel in developing of a position description. I would, I would suggest that, that being the Chair of Personnel, that you put on the agenda to develop that position description, and then work in conjunction with the Finance to develop that position description, and then work in conjunction with the finance director to develop a strategy for what it would cost for him budget.
That's basically what I was gonna propose next.
Alderperson O'Connor.
Sounds like what I was gonna suggest as well, too, although I also remember a conversation, I think it was with Mr. Slavny, who said that it was very difficult for economic developers to be fruitful. So, I think that has to be in the conversation as well.
To be what? I didn't catch what you said.
I think Mr. Slavny said that, I think that was his name, I think, that was talking about economic developers for communities this size, and didn't find them to be very valuable.
Alderperson Reeves, and then Johnson.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, all right, Alderperson Reeves.
So, I think in theory what the, maybe getting a little off track, but I think what the gentleman was talking about, who worked with us on the master plan, was, in theory, if you had people with time on their, you know, on their hands, but I've been looking into this quite a bit, and if you take a look at our website and you look at our Economic Development Committee, they last met in July of 2010, and the most recent report I could find is May 2009. And this is not a reflection are to beat anybody up on a leadership team, it's about the reality, and their plates are super full. And I have multiple job descriptions that I've pulled up. I think it'd be pretty, you know, easy to find information that relates to what we want to do. And so, I think, but I think the suggestion needs to be a combination finance personnel because it's gonna impact both. And so, I think that, I think there is, and whether it's part-time or full-time, I think that's all things that we can explore, but I think that there's a lot of opportunity. We got some direction from the school board that they'd like to see a professional. So, I think that we'd be remiss if we didn't explore it.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. And again, there's a lot of resources out there. The Wisconsin Economic Development Association is a group that has representatives from all over the state, and has representatives from various other entities that are involved. So, you know, I'm confident that with a little bit of direction, there's a lot of different resources that are out there. Ultimately, should we as a board decide to move forward, or as a council move forward, a lot of the descriptions can be grabbed very quickly and easily. And I think the other thing that Tammy raised that is important, I think that whoever is going to be doing this, it's not only the salary of the person, it's their budget. Because again, having an additional person sit in City Hall does nothing for us. What needs to happen is these folks need to be able to be out, they need to travel, they need to be a part of, in my past life, it's what I did for Wisconsin Power and Light. So, it's important for us to grab some other information and really understand what we're trying to, what we're trying to do, and then the goals. Having said that, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's definitely time to take a look and see whether there is a role for this in Stoughton.
Thank you. But I'm gonna take us all the way back to the motion. Help us craft that motion, please. I'm looking at Alderperson Mieski. Lana, do you want to read what you've got, and we'll craft from there.
Kind of based on the amendment that I'd heard was to, the most recent one, was to direct the Personnel Committee to develop a job description for the position of an economic development director, and to have the Personnel Committee work with the finance director to identify a salary and budget for this position. Is that correct?
It'd be with...
With the finance committee?
With AJ and the finance, and the finance director working with the Personnel Director to...
Personnel Director, not the Personnel Committee?
Right.
Okay.
Then after they do that, then it will come to the correct committees. It'll go to Personnel and to Finance and...
I want to stress that there's possibly more than one option. I don't want to limit... I don't want to limit, you know, their discussion to one option.
So, this is a motion by...
Whoever.
Seems kind of collaborative, but...
Doesn't matter.
Pick one.
Someone's gotta raise their hand.
How are we?
Motion by Mieski, second by Swadley. And without further discussion, actually, I'm gonna have Lana read it, so we all know what we're discussing here.
So, it's an amendment.
Well, no, this is a motion.
This is a motion.
We've gone way back to the beginning. This is a motion. Yep.
So, the motion by Mieski to direct the Human Resources Director to develop a job description for the position of an economic development director, and have the Personnel, I'm sorry, the Human Resources Director work with the Finance Director to identify a salary and budget for the position. And refer to the...
How about explore options for budget and...
Job description?
A job description.
It could vary depending on which model.
Right. So, they have the flexibility.
What are you thinking, Lana? Ready to give it another try? Nope, she's still thinking.
Are you following us, Tammy? Do you have direction?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll share it with AJ, so she knows, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was hoping to get it in before she left.
It's not a problem. Okay, let's get the motion, so we can vote on it here.
So, I have the motion to direct the Human Resources Director and Finance Director to explore options for a budget and job description relating to an economic development director position. Is that okay?
That's great.
They look like they're good with that one.
That's good.
Okay, comments on that motion? Alderperson O'Connor.
I'm gonna vote no, primarily because I think that this is committee work, and it should go to Personnel to review, certainly getting the input from the Personnel Director and Finance Director, but I think it's a bit unfair to tell them to come up with a master plan without sufficient input from council or council members.
Thank you. I think I've seen enough different nods one way and the other. Let's vote by roll call. Kittleson.
No.
Swadley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Uh, yes. Reeves.
Aye.
Mieski.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
No.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of nine to two. All right, that motion carries. Takes us back to Agenda Item 11. Here it is, last Agenda Item 11. All right, this Agenda Item is by request of Alderperson Engelberger. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did, I gave a handout to everybody, but I would like to read this into the record and then have some discussion on it afterwards. Since the January Planning Commission meeting, there have been serious mistakes made in the process of the proposed demolition and reuse of the property at 315 Main Street. This process needs to be addressed and appropriately rectified, allowing this process to proceed in a fraudulent, is fraudulent, in my opinion, and puts the city's reputation in jeopardy. The council needs to take action to put this process in the right path, and here are the issues. I also want to just add that this is not a personal attack or anything else on individual or, it's an attack on the process. As far as I'm concerned, we need to get it straightened around. The current owner has not pulled a permit to demolish the building. The demolition permit was pulled by the previous owner in September of 2016. My questions would be, what is the basis for allowing a demolition permit or any permit in this city to transfer to a new owner without reapplying and paying the fee? What is the precedent where we will, where we have allowed a demolition permit to transfer from one owner to another without reapplying and paying the proper fee? Two, so far, the process has been to have a project reviewed by the Planning Commission and not to send it on to the council for final review. We received a letter from the city attorney outlining his basis for this process. This process is flawed, and it is a misinterpretation of the ordinance, in my opinion again. Why is this process only to have a project review done and not a conditional use permit? The current owner did request a conditional use permit by applying and paying the $440 fee on January 24th, four days after the city attorney letter of January 20th went to the Planning Commission. The owner is requesting a change in conditional use to the property after demolition of the building to a private public space for, and I quote, "a gathering style of park", and I quote again, "it will be privately owned with the intention, it will be open to the public, to use as long as it is respected." These statements are from the owner's response to questions on the CUP application. The proper process, in my opinion, is for the conditional use to be acted on by the Planning Commission and recommended to the council for approval. Then the Planning Commission can address the project review if the conditional use is approved per the process laid out in 78905. The process outlined in the January 20th attorney's letter justifies that the Planning Commission has final decision on project review under the procedure set out in Section 78913. This interpretation is a mishmash of the two ordinances, 78905 and 78913. This is an opinion by the city attorney, and in my opinion, is a very far-off base in interpreting what to do in this case. Section 78913, parent four, parent C1, clearly states, "Project review proposals shall follow procedures for conditional use permits referred to Section 78905." It does not say the following, to follow the procedure unless the attorney says you should follow a different procedure, or follow the procedure unless there's a conflict. It says, "Project review shall follow the procedures for CUP under 78905." The attorney has no basis for interpreting this any other way, in my opinion. Number three, in addition to, in addition, "A reading of 78913 makes it clear that the intent of 78913 is to make a distinction between Landmarks Commission and the Planning Commission responsibilities in regulating the downtown design overlay zoning district as an additional layer of regulation over and above the other zoning regulations to our ordinances. All other ordinances that pertain need to be followed, including the procedure that states shall be followed for CUP under 78905." Four, "Other problematic issues have been the Planning Commission's lack of respect and lack of following the ordinances in comprehensive plan regarding historic references and standards. Plant Commission members need to be educated on what they are reviewing. They should not be making decisions on opinions and hearsay, which is very clear when you read some of the justifications under the project review that they voted on erroneously on April 10th. The public hearing notice was vague, in my opinion." Number six, Landmarks 38-35A states that historic districts shall be subject to all of the provisions of this article. 38-41D further states that historic districts shall conform to the guidelines for development of land usage for property within the district, as well as any regulations developed under this article. We have been misled as to the interpretation of this section as well. The process should include any regulations under Section 38 that pertain." Seven, in conclusion, this council should act to halt this process until a proper permit is applied for. It should demand that the process start over by following the proper procedures under the ordinances for conditional use permit, project review, and landmarks. Planning Commission and the council should recognize all standards pertaining to the request. Action needs to be taken now. I would also say that the ordinances that are considered, that are being looked at currently by the RDA, the attorney, the Planning Commission, and Landmarks should be completed soon, and they are not pertaining to this, what I just outlined. So, everything I just outlined is under current ordinances under this city authority. So, I guess I'd like some answers or clarifications from either Rodney or the attorney, or whoever else.
I'll start in that. My first question, Michael, when we talked last week, was a clarification on how this is different, or how this could be different than what we've currently tasked our opinion, our opinion, our attorney to work with the Landmarks Commission on, and that's currently underway. We don't have an answer to all that.
There's no bearing on that whatsoever.
Because, see, I think, in my opinion, and I'll do my opinion, I think it does somehow.
We operate under current, not proposed.
Correct.
I'm not asking to have anything changed for this.
That's no bearing on this discussion.
Okay.
Because that's the future.
Okay.
We are operating under what we have right now.
Right.
What is on the books. That's all we can discuss.
I would maybe recommend some changes when they bring those around, or, you know, consider changes, but this, everything I just laid out here is per current ordinances that currently exist.
And you're talking about 315 East Main, correct?
Or any other place that would pertain, but currently, that's the only permit that we've ever had under a, under the demo permit, my understanding, under the overlay district.
Okay. Matt, did you want to respond at this time?
Well, there's a lot there, and I haven't, this is the first time I've seen the whole, I've seen this, so I'm not really in a position to respond in detail to everything that Alderperson Engelberger has outlined. I can share a couple of observations. I've done the best I could to provide my interpretation of the ordinances. Alderperson Engelberger is right, those are my legal opinions, and he's free to disagree with me, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I've done the best I can, I think I'm right, but I am not necessarily the last word on it. We have a situation where there is an applicant who's been going through a process, and I've not, I don't believe the council has the ability to simply say that the process is gonna stop or intervene in the process. If Alderperson Engelberger is right, and conditional use of process, permit approval is required for the approval of demolition... If, sorry?
That's not what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said that conditional...
Conditional use is for the future conditional use, which was outlined in the conditional use application.
I'm sorry, could you scroll back up?
I don't, you don't have a copy of this, Matt?
No, I don't have a copy. I think you're saying on the first page...
If I can say, Matt, I'm not here to attack you, or attack Rodney, or attack anybody. All I'm saying here is, I want to have this done properly. That's the only thing I'm saying. I'm not trying to, you know, call anybody out or anything like that. I can, I respect your opinion.
Understood.
I want, what I would like you to do is take a look at this in detail, what I've laid out, and tell me that I'm wrong, you know, by showing me what's wrong.
I can do it, I just, I can't do it like on the spot right here tonight.
You can't do it tonight.
I understand.
I mean, I've done the best I could to understand the ordinances, to apply them. Clearly, there are people who disagree with some of the opinions I've reached. I'd be happy to go through and address these point by point, if that's what you'd like me to do, if the council would like me to do.
That's what the council would choose, right, right. We'll get there first.
I don't, yeah, so, and if, for example, I was to do that and come to different conclusions than I've come to, I guess we'd have to figure out what the implications are for the applicant. So, I just can't give you a point by point tonight.
I can just say, the reason that I'm bringing this tonight is because I'm not gonna wait until August 14th and have that building demolished under false pretenses, basically. That's, and I think that's a, that needs to be looked at.
What's August, can I just ask what August 14th is?
The next planning commission.
Or whatever the date is.
Sure. Alderperson Trul.
A couple of, I guess, maybe less interpretive questions, but a couple of things that Michael has pointed out. Do we have an answer to the question of whether the demolition permit, the application is transferable under current policies?
I've never been asked to provide a legal opinion on that. My understanding is that there was a permit applied for by the previous owner, and then that application process was continued by the current owner. I think they're...
They acquired, he acquired the property after the permit had been applied for. That initiated the process. To answer the question, has it been done before? No idea. You know how few demo permits we actually get in this city? It's pretty small, I've never seen one transferred.
How about any permit, Rodney?
I can't speak to it, I'm not aware of any.
That's my point.
I mean, if you, if a house is half under construction and somebody's started the construction and a different owner took over, I think the original permit that, if the construction was still proceeding with that work, that line of work with those contractors, I think it probably would have been allowed to continue.
I mean, if you want a legal opinion on whether or not it was lawful for that evaluation of that application to continue after the sale of the property, we can do that. I mean, I can do that.
I have, I, go ahead.
Again, the second question was specifically to Michael's comment here about the application for the conditional use permit, and again, Rodney, if you could comment, you know, to your understanding, or what was the conditional use permit that the applicant applied for on January 24th?
It's the application to follow the process of the CUP, because the zoning overlay district says you must follow the process for a conditional use permit. The process is, there's an application and a fee, and a hearing process. So, that's the process that we had been undergoing, not to change the use of the property... So, that's the process that we had been undergoing, not to change the use of the property, it was to follow the process of review related to the conditional use permit.
If I could--
Okay, wait a second, we've got others that are, that are waiting patiently. Scott, have you finished?
Yep.
Okay, then I have Alderperson Reeves, Swadley, Mieske, Bartlett, and Engelberger. Alderperson Reeves.
So, so I would definitely be interested in just the legal side of things, and we had to apply for a conditional use permit, now this was through Dane County, for something at our farm. So, my husband had to go before the, the board and explain why we needed this particular variance, this thing in our barn, and they specifically said that they wanted to know why we needed it and how it pertained to us and our barn and our farm and our business, and they said, "This is not transferable, you understand that." So, he had to walk through all that. So, it does make me wonder if that's a Dane County thing, but it calls into question, in my mind, that we, that we need to answer, can it really be, or just because that happened to us on a personal level, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm going to go back to the application, because if you read the, the fine print in the second paragraph, in the second line, it says, "The owner may be held liable for any bodily injury to or death of others for any damage to the property of the others that arises out of the work performed under the building permit, or is caused by negligence by the contractor," blah, blah, blah. So, that basically says that the person that pulled the permit is responsible for if somebody gets hurt during this process. So, if you think about that, you're saying if something happens to this building during construction, the current owner is not held liable the previous owner is. So, you know, if you think logically, how could you say that this is transferable? Because if, you're not transferring the liability with the new owner, based on that language.
I think this is going to be a difficult legal question, and it's, and remember, there was no assignment or transfer of an, of a permit. What happened was, there was an application made, the process had not been completed, and the process continued after the conveyance of the property. So, I think the legal question is, is the current owner of the property entitled to rely on the process that has unfolded this far, or does that person have to start over and submit a new application and go through the process again?
Right, that's one question.
And I don't have the answer to that.
And that's fine, so, I, that's, I wanted to give that example, so when you're wondering, "Well, why are they worried about the permit?", that's the one reason to worry about it. The next thing is, you know, the conditional use is, Alderperson Engelberger stated, you know, it, it says right in our ordinance that that needs to be done first. And my interpretation of that, and certainly I'm not a city attorney, but it says it needs to be done first, and the reason is, is we're approving what it's going to be used for. Once we approve that, then the Planning Commission can work out the details of what that might look like.
Well, actually, that, I think we're confusing a couple of things here. What the ordinance says in seventy-eight-nine-oh-five, I think, or nine-thirteen, is that it says, "Project review proposals shall follow procedures for conditional use permits." Okay? That's a procedural reference. And the purpose of the reference to conditional use permits in this section is not to say that the council or anyone else is going to make a decision about what uses are and are not allowable on the property. Now, it's correct that in many cases, you'll see in your zoning code, in this section, and remember, the underlying zoning classification of this property is central business, and there's a list of permitted uses and a list of conditional uses. The purpose of this process would not to obtain approval to use the property for one of the allowable conditional uses in the ordinance. That was not the purpose of this process. The purpose of the process was to get permission to demolish the building, and the ordinance simply says, "You need to follow the process by which a, you, a conditional use permit would be evaluated to get this approval." It said that at the same time as it provided very specific procedures that are different from the conditional use pro, permit process, which was what led to my opinion that we have to reconcile these two kind of inconsistent statements about process. So--
Well, it says right in there, "The project review shall follow the procedures for the conditional use permit."
It does, and it also says--
But it says, I think it says that first.
Well, but it also says, and I don't know whether it says it first or second, because I don't have it in front of me, it also says, "The Plan Commission shall serve as the final discretionary review body."
On the demolition, if the council has approved what it's going to be used for.
Well, and this is where, and that's fine, I mean, you can have a different opinion. My, my opinion is--
Well, I think that's it in a nutshell, is the council needs to approve the, the use, and based on that, and demolishing it will get it to that use, they can demolish it.
There's, there's nothing in here that suggests that as part of the building demolition review process, the common council has to make a determination on what use of the property is going to be permitted post-determination. That's a very big jump from the language of the ordinance to that conclusion, so I, I wouldn't agree with that conclusion.
Okay, thank you. I've got Alderperson Mieske, Bartlett, Engelberger, and Trul. Alderperson Mieske.
Keep in mind that if the transfer is not legal, that there's a moratorium on all demolition in the overlay, and this property was excluded because it was in the middle of the process, and that would void it, and would put it into the moratorium, is all I'm going to say.
Alderperson Bartlett.
I agree with Alderperson Engelberger and Swadley's comments. I think, de facto, by letting him demo it, we're creating what they want, a privately-owned park, and I think they need a conditional use permit, which is not allowed under commercially-zoned business, per our existing zoning codes. So, I think it's very clear in the public record, from the demo application, from the conditional use permit, from the public record of the meeting minutes, specifically April tenth, and all the other minutes, that the purpose was to make this a privately-owned park. They've stated that many times, and I think that's not an allowed land use, which would require a conditional use, conditional use permit, and allowing a demo creates that, so I don't see how we can separate those.
I, I, I see a point you're making, and I, and I recognize that's a, a challenge with what he's said in his materials. I don't think he can use it as a park, per se. The, the ordinance does allow, in the central business district, active and passive parks on public land, not on private land.
Public.
And, correct, and I don't think he can use it as a private park. What I think, what I think he's allowed to do is have a vacant lot following the demolition of a structure. Now, that doesn't speak to use, that speaks to, you know, a vacant lot. I don't think he could put a sign up and say, you know, "Welcome to my park," and, and just, just hear me out. And I, this has been a challenge from an interpretation standpoint. If the alternative is true, that you can't have a vacant lot, then why does the ordinance allow demolition? And so, I think it has to be the case that if you have a building in this district that you wish to demolish, and have a vacant lot, and I would say to him, "You can't have a park, you can have a vacant lot. You can use it, actually, some of the purposes, there are permitted uses, including some agricultural-type uses that are allowed, in that district, on that lot, without a conditional use permit," I'd say, "But we have this design overlay concept here, where you have to get Plan Commission approval for what's it going to look like." So, but, the, the most kind of complicated, nasty little zoning problem I've, I've ever run into, so--
I still disagree, because he didn't ask for a vacant lot, he asked for a private park in his applications, so it should not have been allowed to move forward.
As I understood his application, he was asking for authority to demolish the building, and he was then told by the Plan Commission, "We'll, we'll approve that, but on the condition that we first approve a, a plan, a landscaping plan, for what it's going to look like when you're done." To my knowledge, no one has said to him, "We're authorizing you to use this as a park, as a public park, a private park, a playground," and I would, and my, my, my understanding is, no, he can have a vacant lot.
That is the state in Houston's application, and on the public meeting minutes, stated as what he was going to use it for. So, that's what he asked for the use.
Well, that he should be, that should be clarified with him, you can't, you can't use it for that.
Well, that's public record, and that was what, what they approved, so I, I think they overstepped their authorization.
I don't think they approved that, I mean, I have the resolution.
Well, they approved the demo, which would create the park, if they approved the landscaping plan.
That wouldn't allow him to use it, just because they allow the demolition, doesn't mean he can go forward with any use that he wants. He has to still use it in a way that conforms to the zoning.
And that's still being discussed at, at the Plan Commission, right? He's coming back with what the plan might be, or was directed to come back with whatever that it might be.
Doesn't he have to state the use for the public hearing? Isn't that the purpose of the public hearing?
Well, I thought the purpose of the public hearing was to evaluate the application to demolish the structure. I mean, because what I'm hearing is that there's one interpretation of the zoning code that says, "Before a building can be demolished, there needs to be a determination made by, apparently, the Plan Commission recommending to the council, and the council making a decision as to what the property's going to be used for," but that's not how I understand the ordinance.
Okay, I have Alderperson Engelberger, and then Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I mean, everything you just talked about with regard to the conditional use is exactly what the Planning Commission voted on on April tenth. They voted on, on, on that resolution based on the fact that his CUP application said exactly what I quoted here, that they want a conditional use as a private park. And in my opinion, we do not have a private park in our ordinances, or in our, and I think you just stated that, Matt, or in our--
I agree with that.
--comprehensive plan. In addition, the, my opinion, Landmarks is pretty clear about that any building designated in a historic district in, in thirty-eight is part of the process for, you have to go through the process of the landmarks ordinance. None of that has been done at all.
That's only if it's a, designated as a local landmark.
That's not exactly what it says. It says exactly what I just read. It says, let me read the ordinance. If I can find it. Thirty-eight, thirty-five, powers and duties. The Commission may, subject to Section thirty-eight, thirty-six, recommend that the City Council designate landmarks, landmark sites, and historic districts within the city based upon the criteria of Section thirty-eight, thirty-four. Once so designated, such landmarks, landmark sites in historic districts shall be subject to all of the provisions of this article.
Has not been designated any of those things.
It has been designated as a historic district.
No, it hasn't.
That's what the overlay district is, Matt.
No, it's not.
Take a look at your ordinances, that's what the overlay district is. It's the historic district, downtown historic district.
Okay, I have Trul.
I'm not done yet.
All right.
This, this idea that they're not changing the use of the building--
That's okay, yeah.
--is, or the use of the property is, it's crazy. They are changing the use. They asked in the CUP application to change it to a, a private park. We don't have a private park. These things need to be discussed and talked about. The process needs to be done right.
Alderperson, go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
Just briefly, it's, it's very clear that there's a distinction between historic district within the meaning of Chapter thirty-eight, and I've met with the Landmarks Commission and, and the Chair of the Landmarks Commission, and it confirmed that there, there have been no historic districts created under Chapter thirty-eight in the city of Stoughton. There are districts listed on the National Register, and there is a downtown design overlay zoning district, but that is not the same thing as a historic district designation under Chapter thirty-eight. So, I have seen nothing, and I'm confident that this structure is not a structure that's been designated as a local landmark, or it is also not a structure that's in a Chapter thirty-eight historic district. The use of the property is, I'm looking at the resolution adopted by the Planning Commission, it says, "Be it resolved by the Planning Commission that the application for a project approval to demolish the structure is approved, contingent on the applicant's bringing a detailed landscaping plan back to the Planning Commission." I don't believe the Plan Commission has, by virtue of that action, authorized the use of the property as a, as a private park, per se. I don't believe that it can be used as a park, if what we mean by that is, you know, inviting the public in to use it as a park. My understanding of the ordinance is that if someone owns this particular structure and wants to demolish it, and leave it as a vacant lot until such time as they're ready to redevelop it, that that's allowed, that that's an allowable use. I think it has to be, because if that's not allowed, then you would never have a right to demolish a building, because you'd have a vacant lot for some period of time, even if it's a short time.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
My, my question continues to be about the process. Matt, to, to the question of, of having to follow through the CUP process, you indicated that we, that, that in the overlay district, we have, we have to follow that, that, does that then require, did it then require that it would have had to come to the council? Because isn't the council the final step on any conditional use permit? Again, that's part of our, part of our struggle with this, and I'll speak just as, as a Plan Commission member. We've been trying to follow, you know, guidelines that, even to the point of, of, the, the applicant has brought a couple of different landscape plans before the Commission, and we have no standards. We, we don't know what we're actually judging it against, and, and so that's been one of the, one of the challenges that we've had even, you know, at, at the Plan Commission. But to, to Alderman Engelberger's questions here, really, the, you know, for me, a, a couple of these are, are very straightforward. Was it permissible for, for the applicant, for the application to proceed, or did, did the new owner have to, have to go back in the process? And then, second, in, in my discussions with, with Michael about some of these things, you know, if we had to go through the, if we were supposed to go through the, the full conditional use process, in terms of hearings and things, should that action have come to council before we made the final approval to go ahead and, and do the, authorize the demolition? And then we could have still had, you know, still had conditions on whether we wanted to see a landscape plan or things like that. I'm, I'm questioning whether, at the point at which we actually took up the action to, and, and voted in April to, to demo the, the property, should we have been following more of the conditional use process?
That, that's not my view of the ordinance. The ordinance is, is challenging in various respects, and I say that in my opinion letter. I mean, I say, "Look, and here it says right out, it's the conditional use permit process, here it says, 'The Plan Commission is the final discretionary review body.'" I saw those as being in conflict with one another, and then I relied on rules of statutory construction to try and reconcile what I saw as competing, conflicting language. Am I right? I don't know. I give you the, I did, I did the best I could. The Plan Commission followed my advice. If I'm wrong, and the Plan Commission doesn't have the authority to make this decision, then the applicant's process is somewhat vulnerable to legal challenge. The legal challenge would be someone who disagrees with what's happening could file a lawsuit and say, "I, I, I'm asking that the action be overturned. I want, I want somebody to stop the, him from tearing down his building." Now, there's another concern I have with the ordinance that relates to your reference to standards. I, I have concerns about an ordinance that creates, that delegates to the Plan Commission or the City Council the authority to make a decision like this without adequate guidance, adequate standards. The standard, there are, there is some language in the ordinance, and it's quite challenging, as you know. If this came to the common council, and, and the council had to make a decision, they would have to look at those standards and try and apply them, and do the best it can. We just got a, a decision from the Wisconsin Supreme Court in the last two months in a conditional use permit case. Challenging decision. Three justices said, "We want to change the law in Wisconsin on conditional use permits, including what kind of standards are okay or not, and who has the burden of proof to demonstrate either the permit should be granted or should not be granted." Those were the three dissenters. We have seven justices. So, we had three said that we want to change all the rules. Then we had two saying we want to keep the rules the way they are, and we had two others saying, "I agree with the mandate of the two who want to keep the rules-- saying, "I agree with the mandate of the two who want to keep the rules the way they are, but we're not telling you what we think about why." Right now, the law is kind of up in the air in terms of conditional use permits in the state of Wisconsin. There's a new bill in the legislature that was just introduced last week that would, again, turn the world upside down on these conditional use permits. I believe the advice I've given is the best I know how to give. I'm happy to, I have not rendered an opinion on this question relating to the continuation of the application process after the conveyance of the property. So we had, we had an application for a permit, the sale of the property, the process continued. I've not rendered an opinion on that. If the council wants an opinion on that, I could do it. I think we're going to end up with some additional challenging kind of legal questions that may not have certain answers.
Thank you. I have Alder Person Reeves, O'Connor, and Johnson. Alder Person Reeves.
So Alder Person Truul asked some of the questions that I had, although it's still sort of gray. But I also share the concerns of Alder Person Bartlett because I think, you know, we are, whatever you want to call it, that is on Main Street, and a lot of people walk by it. That is right smack in the middle of the area. That's one of the most important pieces of property in its scope in our city. So we, I just don't feel like we can ever make a decision without connecting the dots. And so we allow the demolition, then what? And I remember I was at the meeting where the folks presented their ideas, and I remember the young man, I think it was their son, said, "This is going to be a public-private park." And Alder Person Truul said, you know, sort of like, "What the heck is a public-private park?" I don't, I don't know that that was answered adequately. I still don't know who would, whether it's a vacant lot or whatever, you know, who's going to clean it, who's going to prevent loitering. But the bigger thing is, those folks clearly said, "This is going to be," that night, it was a public-private park. I don't know what's on their application, but that, to me, you can't process an application until we really know what the intent is, whether or not it fits in with our ordinances and our plan for the city. So I still am not 100% sure, you know, of that process. It's very confusing, but common sense tells me we still, we need to ask a lot more questions before we just tear down the building and say we're good with it because I just don't know what it's going to look like when it's torn down. So.
Thank you. Alder Person O'Connor.
Well, I think Matt's legal education's probably better than any of ours here, and he's making a rather difficult decision based on conflicting information. You know, we're not going to resolve anything here. I think that if there's legal recourse through a lawsuit, then it can be settled that way. But I think trying to get an opinion that's going to disagree with whichever side you're on once is a mistake.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Hi, thank you. I actually went to law school, and I took land use and community development at UW. And I do remember coming over topics of conditional use, and we are actually kind of going the opposite way from what I remember. Like, for example, if you have an area where it was agriculture, and then there was buildings being subdivided around it, the person that had the agriculture land got a conditional use, but it, it had to be designated whether it was transferable or not. So I don't understand how the, and I'm, you know, I'm coming into this because I never knew that the other person had applied for it for conditional use. And then, is that right, Mike? And then?
What's that?
Applied for demolition.
Demolition. And then, did the, the next owners come again and apply for the same conditional use?
No.
They applied for a conditional use but not for the demolition.
Okay, so to me, that's, that's kind of questionable. And the other thing is, Alder Person Truul said, "We don't have standards." I wish Peggy was here because she, she was reading at one time when she was speaking in front of the council about the standards, and I think it was in Statute 38, that she was referring to what the statutes are we should be following for this district. Do you guys recall that? So it may not be a historical district, but I thought we were also supposed to be following the comprehensive plan. That does have an overlay district in it. So we are all going around in circles, so those are my interpretations. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Swedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, you know, we do have standards for the conditional use permit, and I think, you know, Matt, I think you acknowledge that, they're, they're in the zoning.
There are if someone was seeking a conditional use permit.
Right. And to me, that's why the ordinance was, more than likely, that's why it was written that way because we had standards, we could apply them, and we could determine, the council could determine before they started anything what the use was going to be and whether it was appropriate or not, you know? And if, you know, the council could okay a conditional use, that's consistent with demolishing the building if they wanted to. So I think you can look at it pretty much any way you want it at the end of the day, you know? But the conditional use that's stated in the applications is not consistent with our ordinances or a zoning. So, you know, I think that that's why it's important. And the question is, is if the Planning Commission had a desire, and I don't know if they do or not, to reverse their decision regarding this, is there a process available to do so? And what are the challenges involved with doing that? And if that's a discussion we even want to have in the open session?
Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you. I would just, you know, I mean, one thing, whether, whether the permit was, as far as I'm concerned, when, when the ownership changed, that permit that was, that was pulled for the demolition is null and void. Now you have a new owner, you have a new condition, period. I don't know how you can do anything different than that. I don't, like, as I asked Rodney, I don't, didn't hear any precedents. He never heard of any permit within the city, demolition or otherwise, that had followed that process.
The permit wasn't issued, just so everybody knows, there was never a demolition permit issued.
There was an application.
Correct. Which initiated the...
There was an application that was applied for by the previous owner.
Correct.
It was never an application by the current owner. That's my distinction, and in my opinion, everything should be null and void, period. That should null and void everything. Now, the next point is...
Before you leave that point, Michael, can I ask counsel then? Is that an item that our common council would like to have the attorney look into further?
You mean whether that was allowable for that to continue?
Yep, yep. So it'd need to see a motion and then some action regarding that, just so we're starting to lay a trail of where we're going. Is that right, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather have a motion to address a bunch of different issues but not just one thing.
Let's do it one by one.
If you want to do it one by one, that's fine.
Yep, let's do it one by one. So your motion would be?
Get a legal opinion regarding whether a person can, whether a person does not have to file an application for a demo permit to demo a building. That's exactly what happened.
Yeah, but that's not what I heard you at. You were talking about, is it transferable?
But it wasn't, but it was never processed. What Rodney just said, they applied, but it was never given, and so therefore there's nothing to transfer.
It was just a continuation of the application process.
Is the application transferable?
So the legal question...
I want you to tell us, Matt, if that's okay to do that.
Right.
What happened?
Could the application process continue?
Point of clarification?
Yep.
Did the current owner, did they actually fill out a new application then?
No.
I don't, I don't know.
So basically, the planning department kept on, kept on the process when there was no owner anymore, for somebody who didn't own the property, at the request of somebody who didn't own the property.
My understanding is, and we'll have to, if you really want to get into this, we can get, we'll have to interview Mr. Stacy to find out exactly what happened. I believe that he was contacted on numerous occasions and met on numerous occasions with the current owner and the applicant and did what I...
They didn't physically fill out a new application.
I don't know, I don't know if there was a new application submitted.
There wasn't.
The question that I'm hearing is this, is, is that demolition application transferable? We know we had an application, and then before that application was fully processed, we had a new owner.
What was allowed, yeah.
If I can finish, the question I'm hearing then is, that we're asking, is, is an application transferable when the ownership of the property changed?
But it didn't really get transferred. What really happened was, what our process allowed to happen here was that the, that the application that was filed for demo permit was carried through with the property, not with the owner. So that's what happened. I think that's a, not a proper situation.
So what is the question that we're asking, Matt?
Well, I mean, here's how I have, I have the question is, is the, is the application process and the approval by the Plant Commission, for some reason, now legally invalid because the current owner continued an application process that started before he bought the property?
Absolutely.
Isn't that the same, is it transferable? Isn't that the same question?
Well, you know, I'd be extremely careful with language here.
Been transferring.
And I think the, I think the issue is, if he's, if I'm the applicant, let me just say one other thing here that I think bears some recognition. Our planning department tries to be helpful to people.
Absolutely.
And it's not their practice to throw up obstacles and barriers to people to prevent them from moving forward. And so if you have someone who comes in and says, "I bought this house. The person I bought it from was in the middle of this process. They've already submitted the application. They've already paid the fee. Can I continue the process?" I think the response from the planning department is probably, in most cases, not going to be, "No, we're going to make you go back to square one and start over." The other, and there's another element of that that I think bears some recognition here, just in terms of, I think, appropriately so. I mean, I think our city offices try to help people. So I don't think there would be anything inconsistent with that principle in allowing some new owner to continue that application process. Now, is there an actual legal problem with that, where now we have to say to that person, "Actually, your approval is now invalid because we weren't allowed to do that"? I think the answer's going to be no, but that's the question that you're asking me to answer.
I guess the question is, does a new owner have to fill out a new permit in this situation?
That's the question.
Or do they not?
Yeah.
That's the question.
Okay, but there's a motion by Engelberger to ask the attorney to look into that question.
Yes, and I will look at that.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Mijoski. And I won't pretend to say, "What is that?" Lana?
I, Matt said it so quickly, I got part of it, so I apologize.
I know, I know.
I have it.
That's good.
I have it.
So would you read it for us, Matt? What are we voting on?
A motion to direct the city attorney to provide a legal opinion regarding whether or not the actions taken on the demolition application are valid or invalid in light of the fact that the original application was submitted by the prior owner, and a new application was not, new written application at least, was not submitted by the current owner.
All right.
That's how I understand it.
That's our motion before us. Comments on the motion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
That motion carries with one no.
Got some other ones, too.
Yep.
So I would also like Matt to look into his ruling or his opinion on, on 913, 78913 4C1, that says, "Project review proposals shall follow procedures for conditional use permits refer to Section 78905." And if, if it has to be under 78905, and the word "shall," in my opinion, not in my opinion, and what it states in our ordinances is mandatory. That means it's mandatory. That means it has to be under 905. And that means that the council would have, go on the recommendation, vote on the recommendation of the Plant Commission. That's what it says in 905.
Okay, Michael, we're going to need your help to make that a motion.
Yeah, I think we need that.
Well, I think I have it. I have it.
All right.
Requesting a legal, the city attorney reconsider his legal opinion regarding whether the conditional use permit procedures must be followed in its entirety for project review proposals.
Okay, there's a motion by Engelberger. Is there a second?
I want to know if that statement, "Project review proposals shall follow procedures for conditional use permits refer to Section 78905," is there any reason why you wouldn't use 905 when it says "shall"? That's my question.
Well, and I, and I understand that's the issue, and you asked me to reconsider that because I did issue an opinion on it previously, and you're asking me to revisit it.
Yep.
Okay, so there's a motion by Engelberger, second by Hirsch. The council understands what they're voting regarding? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries.
Other one I would like to have...
Let's let the record show that O'Connor left at 10:02.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock? Thank you. All right, Michael?
Yeah, another one I would like to have checked is the overlay zoning district and relating to, let's see if I can find it here, downtown design, design overlay zoning district. This is under 78517. Talks about the purpose of what it is. Number two, boundaries. The Main Street Historic District as established by the Stoughton Landmarks Commission, which extends along Main Street from Yarra River Fifth Street to Fifth Street, as depicted in the official zoning map. That is, the historic district is the overlay district.
It has been created as an overlay district under Chapter 78. Again, to my rec, knowledge, there is no, there is nothing, if the question is, is this also a historic district under Chapter 38? And that's a factual question. That's not a legal issue. It either has or has not been designated as a historic district under Chapter 38. All the information I have from the city's records and people I've talked to is it has not been. That's not a legal question, if that's the question.
Well, I guess my question is, how did a downtown historic district and the four residential historic districts get designated if they weren't by the Landmarks Commission?
They're not, they're not local. Those are from the National Parks Service.
No, they're not.
It's, well, here's what it shows on their website. Their website says it's a historic district on the National Register in Stoughton. I don't know if it's created under Local 38, but...
To my knowledge, it's not.
But their website shows it lists it.
That's a fact. So what you're saying, Matt, is that it is a historic district, but you're saying it's not a historic district under the landmarks?
Under, right, exactly.
The 38.
It's a historic district on the National Register.
I'd like to have that checked.
Lana can look into that. I mean, you can check the, yep, Lana can, can look into that.
I mean, when you look at 913, basically, like I said, it distinguishes between what the landmarks role is and the Planning Commission's role is with regard to project review or design review, those types of things. And those, those are just, that's just another layer of regulation under our whole zoning code. And when it says to refer to 905, you refer to 905 for the process.
Let's take a quick step backwards, though. You were asking Lana to look at the designation of the Main Street Historic District or Overlay District. Could you say that for us, Michael?
What's that?
Say that for us. What are we asking Lana to look up?
Whether the downtown historic district is a, as it states in the, in Article 38, a historic district.
Yeah, whether...
I don't know how else to say that.
I think, yeah, what he's asking is whether it is a historic district designated under the procedures in Chapter 38 and therefore subject to the requirements of Chapter 38. If it has been designated as a historic district, then there has to be, under Chapter 38...
But it follows 38.
Historic, and there has to be a plan that's been approved for it and various other things.
Okay. Lana has that, but there's been a motion. Is there a second regarding that inquiry for Lana to do some research? Lana to do some research?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, if everyone understands what that is, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Elderperson Johnson had a quick comment to that, I believe.
Going back on historic district and the landmarks district, a property can be made a landmark district by going through a process. I think with a historic district, it doesn't necessarily need to be designated, going through a process, to be historic. It could just follow the standards of section 38. That's what my interpretation was from.
Contributing, isn't that the language?
No, that's for National Register. So for historic districts under chapter 38, there is a specific process by which those districts are created. There are designation criteria, as I understand it. There has to be then a historic preservation and land usage plan approved. And I've discussed with the chair of the landmarks commission and with the zoning administrator, do, are any of these districts that we have in the city, have any of those been created under chapter 38? And I've been told, no, none of them have been.
Okay, Michael, we'll get back to you, but...
I just want to say that the question that really is maybe one of the more challenging questions people have asked about tonight, and I guess I want to know if you want me to weigh in on it, is this question of use, whether or not there needs to be some approval of the use of the property as part of this process and how that fits into that.
I guess...
It's on the resolution itself, under section 78-913, paragraph four, so paragraph C.
The number of the resolution, Matt?
This is resolution R13-2017, introduced July 10th. I got too much paper here. Paragraph D of that resolution.
Was it a resolution of the council or of the planning commission?
This is R2217?
R13-2017.
Oh, I don't have that one.
It's the planning commission one, so it was in the packet tonight. I only have one copy. Section D. It states that land use is part of the...
Oh, shall focus its review on the application's compliance with sound aesthetic land use design. Those are the so-called standards in our ordinance that our plant commission is supposed to consider when deciding to approve that.
And I take that as land use as consideration for the demolition permit. That's, that's under the section for review and application of demolition of buildings.
So would be proper for, under that standard, it would be proper for the plant commission to consider what the use is, I guess, whether that makes sense or not? That's what the...
And that's what was proposed, a private park, in all public records.
But let me just say, I don't think the plant commission has the authority to approve a use...
This use isn't allowed by our commercial zoning district.
I don't think they have the authority, even though land use is a standard that can be considered under the ordinance, that doesn't mean they can approve a use that isn't listed as an allowable use in that district.
They did approve a use, they approved a private park, because that's what was at the meeting in minutes.
Well, I understand you, your argument is that they approved it because that's what he was, said he was going to do with it.
And they're giving him guidance on how this landscape to be a private park.
Well, then that needs to be corrected. Everyone needs to understand, I think the plant commission and the applicant need to understand, the purpose of this process is not to allow you to use this property for a use that is not allowed in our zoning code, that includes a park.
That was the intent.
Not the purpose of this.
That was the intent of the owner.
He was approved on that intent, so.
Well, that was a...
I think it was a, yeah.
Then that's because this is so darn difficult, frankly.
Elderperson Truel.
Which, again, in the packet, as a part of it, it says, "To address the conditional use permit, I, Dennis, am writing this letter to address the form that is used for the conditional use permit for the property at the address of 305-315 East Main. The intention is to remove the existing building and then to convert the property into a gathering area style of park. The intended use is to keep it as an open area that could be used for various activities. It'll be privately owned with the intention that it is to be open to the public to use as long as it is respected." And to that point, again, that evening, when we passed the motion and the plan was shown, as Alderwoman Reeves has pointed out, my immediate question was, "Are you sure you understand what you're talking about? I'm not familiar with a public-private park, I don't understand how the liability is going to be handled." And so we were struggling with, and this is where I keep coming back to the, what element of the conditional use process did we have to follow and did we do it?
Yeah, and does the council want me to try and weigh in on that and responding? You know, that's clearly one of the big questions here.
Yes.
Have we approved that? Is that something that can be approved? What's the process?
Let's put it out in a motion, if you would, please.
And along with that, I'd like to know...
Just a second, let's finish that one first. Did you want to make that a motion to?
Please.
Can you tell us what you'd like to say?
Well, I mean, here's what I'm writing, and I'm saying there is a concern that this process is being used to approve the use of this land as a public or private park. Is that allowable? Is that what's happening?
And fundamentally, Matt, for me, it was a case where the question, that's where I come back now to ask the question about the whole conditional use permit application that the applicant applied for. Was it, was it because they had to follow the process or because they were being asked to deal with, again, this is a future use?
And I think the answer is, the form that the zoning office has is a conditional use permit form, and the ordinance makes reference to the conditional use permit process, so that's the form that was used. It's not necessarily an ideal format to match up with this project review process.
Well, and the challenge I have, forgive me, is, again, in your memo, you indicated, I'm looking for it really quickly, about the fact that we had to follow the conditional use process.
Unless there is a specific, I think what I say is, in my opinion, the procedures applicable to conditional use permits must be followed except where 78-913 specifies a different procedure. That was my opinion. And in my view, I thought 78-913 did specify a different procedure with respect to who makes the decision on project review.
But Matt, the problem with that is that it says, "Shall follow the procedures under 905," period. That's what it says.
I get it, but it's not the first time you've got two ordinances that say things that can't both be true. And when you have, when you have something, when you have it saying two things that can't both be true, somehow you got to reconcile them.
In my opinion, then you go to the one that says "shall," which is mandatory, under our ordinance.
I understand that's your opinion.
It's not my opinion, it says it right here in the ordinance, Matt.
Excuse me, Michael, Scott was still talking about a motion to ask for a review.
I think, I think, city attorney Dragney understands where...
I know what you're looking for.
All right, but so that we're all clear, and folks can agree, disagree, or whatever with the motion, what was that motion, Matt?
The last one I have is that there is a concern, there's a, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
There's a concern that the process is being used to obtain approval of use of the property as a public or private park, which is not allowed. Is that true? Is that not true? Can that, is that an allowable outcome here? And my opinion, I think, is going to be, I don't believe that's what's happening. I understand there's language in the application that suggests that, I understand there's a standard that references land use. I don't believe that the end result of this process is one that would allow this property to be used as a, to anything other than what the zoning code allows as a permitted or, as a permitted use on this property. If he wants to use it for something that's a conditional use on this property, he'd have to go through that process and get that approval.
All right, so want that to be a motion, or are we looking for consensus on that direction? All right, a motion, there's a motion by Truel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Engelberger. All those in favor?
What is the, what is the motion?
That was a long one.
This is, the motion is to ask the city attorney to comment on the concern that this process is being used to approve the use of the property as a public or private park or a use that's not allowed under the zoning code.
And before we vote, Alderperson Mijoski would like to make a comment.
You know, you were just talking about the collision of two different ordinances, and you rendered an opinion on that. And my question to that is, and I'd like an answer to this, is how do you determine which one supersedes the other?
So I quoted from a, from a decision, "In my opinion," I said, that the case I was looking at for guidance on this says, "Context is important to meaning, so too is the structure of the statute in which the operative language appears. Therefore, statutory language is interpreted in the context in which it is used, not in isolation, but as part of a whole, in relation to the language of surrounding or closely related statutes, and reasonably to avoid absurd or unreasonable results." So that's the kind of statutory interpretation guidance that I was using. And then I was looking at the structure of the ordinance, which provided for project review and very clearly identified, and I'll do a better job of this when I, when I'm in my office, but, I mean, it talks about exactly who the players are. City council's not a player, it's not referenced.
No, I was just curious of how you, how you determine that.
Yeah, that's, that's the language that I referred to in, in my opinion, yeah.
Okay, and now we have a vote?
Just a question on that, two things. On that, your opinion here cites the state statutes, it doesn't cite ordinance language. So, I mean, that's two different things.
Which opinion, the January 21st?
One you just read from, yeah.
Well, I refer entirely to the city's code of ordinances and to a single Wisconsin case, a decision of the Court of Appeals.
And the case is a statute.
Is the ordinance the same thing as the statute?
No.
Well, you're citing the statute here with this case.
I am not citing the statute. I'm citing a Wisconsin case.
By these principles of statutory interpretations, what does that mean?
Oh, statute, the rules of statutory interpretation apply equally to statutes and ordinances. I'm sorry.
Okay, my other question is, I also want you to take a look at 78-013, word usage.
We vote out, we have a motion on the floor, let's address that one first. Alderperson Truel, second by Engelberger, to review the... I can't repeat what Matt said, it was...
With regard to creation of a public-private park, really, that's really allowable.
Okay, I would have, yeah, that's where I would have gone in concern, short terms. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Now we have to be careful, if Greg is going home, if we lose Coram.
How many more can you lose?
We...
Eight, eight.
Good eight, good eight.
Good eight. Nobody else is allowed to leave.
You're still there.
If somebody leaves, we can't adjourn, so don't leave the rest of us hanging.
No, if someone leaves, we just go. It's over if someone else leaves. Alderperson Engelberger.
Just one other thing on the, that 78-905, where it references "shall," I want you to look at 78-013, word usage, number four, the words "shall," "must," and "will" are mandatory, and number 13, if there's any ambiguity between the text of this chapter and any caption, illustration, or table, or text, or table, the text shall control, because you're referencing F or whatever.
Oh, the appendix.
Yeah.
Chapter 78.
So you want me to, in looking at the conditional use permit issue, whether that CUP procedure has to be followed?
Yeah, I have no idea how you can possibly do anything other than go under 05, 905, when it says "shall," it's mandatory.
Yeah, I can look at that. And so you're asking me to factor in 78-013?
Yeah.
And I'm just going to let you guys know, and I think Rodney knows this, this is not the only place in our zoning code where the drafter of this zoning code chose to say that the CUP procedure will be followed, even though we have come to the conclusion that that means, yes, unless there's something specifically to the contrary in the code and a specific provision that suggests or requires a different outcome. So I'm going to have to look at that. Am I remembering that correct, Rodney? Aren't there other sections that do the same, say the same thing?
This is the one that's on the front burner.
This is on the front burner, but there are other places that do the same thing.
Another issue is the...
Okay, so there's a motion by Engelberger regarding some research on 78-013.
That's not a motion, he's just going to look into that.
I will look, I will...
It's part of that 78-905.
Is that part of the last motion?
Yep.
One of the previous ones. One other thing, if I can.
Although you're running out of your cards tonight.
Timing, well, this is going to be a, timing, what's our timing for this?
What Robert's rule say, three times? I was way past three times, I'm just saying.
What's our timing for this?
I'm just saying.
And this all has to be done before the August 14 plant commission meeting.
Yeah. Well, that can be, can be put a hold on it by council until such time as these questions are answered. To determine if this has actually been a legal procedure.
But let me, let me suggest this, we have a council meeting on August 8. I will, I will have this, I will be prepared to report back on August 8.
Yeah, because August 1st is a Tuesday.
All right. Alderperson Hirsch.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.